I'm driving. Driving in the car. I'm driving. I'm driving. Driving in the car. I'm driving.
It's like we might be missing a mayor.
Okay, great.
The regular meeting for Monday, August 11, 2025 is called the order with the clerk please call the order.
Mayor Kaufman?
Right here.
Councilmember Bergen?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs? Councilmember Coombs? Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hancock?
Here.
Councilmember Drinsky? Councilmember Cassal?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Murillo?
Present.
Mayor Protim Sundberg?
Here.
And Councilmember Drinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Coombs? Hey, there's a quorum.
Announcement of the public calling line.
The public is invited to comment in support of or to oppose specific agenda items during the during the regular council meeting. If you would like to speak and have not already spoken to an operator, please press star three. For those watching on Aurora TV, call eight five five six nine five three four seven five and press star three when connected. You will hear a prompt confirming you're in line to speak to an operator and then be able to continue listening to the meeting. When the operator comes on the line, please be ready to give them your name, the agenda item you wish to speak on, and provide the name of the city in which you reside. Keep in mind, you must press star three before the city clerk reads the title of the item you wish to speak on. If you plan to speak on more than one agenda item, you will need to press star three each time you place back in the queue. Also, please note that harassing or abusive treatment of our operators will not be tolerated and will result in the caller being disconnected. Finally, as a reminder, council does not allow comments about non-agenda matters during the regular council meeting. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes.
Buenas tardes. Se les invita al público para dar comentario. Para hablar con el operador, por favor, presione asterisco tres. Para aquellos que nos ven.
Gabriela, you were muted. There you go.
Buenas tardes. Se les invita al público para dar comentario para hablar con el operador. Por favor, presiona asterisco tres. Para aquellos que nos ven en Aurora TV, llame al ocho cinco cinco seis nueve cinco tres cuatro siete cinco. Y al conectarse, presione asterisco tres. Escuchará una grabación confirmando que está en línea para hablar con un operador y continuará escuchando la reunión. Una vez que el operador se conecte a la llamada, esté listo para dar su nombre, el tema de la agenda del cual desea comentar y la ciudad donde reside. Tome en cuenta que debe presionar asterisco tres antes de que el secretario municipal lea el título del tema del cual desea comentar. Así también, por favor, tome en cuenta que cualquier trato abusivo o de acoso hacia nuestros operadores resultará en la desconexión de su llamada. Finalmente, se le recuerda que durante la reunión regular, el consejo no permitirá comentarios sobre temas no incluidos en la agenda. Para aquellos en espera para dar comentario, se les concede máximo tres minutos. Gracias.
Please join me in an invocation. O Lord, our God and our Father, we come to you and we ask that you look upon this particular gathering tonight and guide us in our decisions. I bless our city with honorable industries, sound education, and good government. Unite the community together even though we come from different backgrounds. We pray that there be justice and peace in our city. Give our city council wisdom, direction, and sensitivity to the business and proceedings before us tonight. Hear us therefore as we commit this meeting to the health of this community. Amen. Please join me in a place allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Executive session update. During the executive session, we discussed development and personnel issues. Development agreement and personnel issues. Land acknowledgement. The city of Aurora acknowledges that we gather on the territories and ancestral homelands of the Cheyenne, Arapaho, and Lakota peoples, past and present. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. Indigenous peoples have remained committed to the stewardship of this land over many centuries. As towards the recognition and spoken and heard, the ties that these nations have to their traditional home. Homelands and to their vital place in the ecosystem are renewed and reaffirmed, and we are called upon to be better stewards of the land we inhabit as we continue to work to meet the needs of our entire community. Let's see. Approval of the motion is in order for approval of the minutes from July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes.
Moved by Mayor Protim, second by?
Yeah.
I say by Councilmember Murillo, discussion. I see no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of the minutes for July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Mayor Kaufman?
Hey, what's this?
Katie, I mean, yes, Drinsky.
I mean, yes, too, Sundberg.
Councilmember Coombs? Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to approve the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty five city council meeting minutes.
I want to remind those making public comments to avoid personal attacks, to avoid foul language, and to adhere to the rules to include time limits. Next motion before us is the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I move to adopt the agenda.
It's been moved by Mayor Protim, second by?
Mayor, second.
I say my councilmember Lawson to adopt the agenda. Discussion? I see no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor Kaufman?
Hey, what's this?
Katie, I vote yes, Drinsky.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt the agenda.
Next motion before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on motions. Item number nine C one. Motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to advance the consent agenda. Nine motions, nine A. I think it all goes all the way up and?
No, it's only nine C one.
Oh, nine C one?
Yeah, just.
Was it? Okay. My apology. I move to approve nine C one.
It's removed by Mayor Protim, second by?
Hancock.
Second by Councilmember Hancock to approve the consent calendar on motions, nine C one. Discussion? I see no discussion. Call for the question on the adoption of the motion to approve the consent calendar on motions.
Mayor Kaufman?
Hey, what's this?
Councilmember Drinsky?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt the consent calendar for motions.
The next motion before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances. Item number ten A one to ten B five. Motion?
Mayor, motion to approve ten A one through ten B five.
Moved by Councilmember Gardner, second by?
Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen to approve the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances. Item number ten A one to ten B five. Discussion? I see no, Councilmember Coombs.
I'd just like to pull off ten A one for a presentation.
Very well. Question before us is the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances. Item ten A two to ten B five. Discussion? I see none. Call for the question on the adoption of the consent calendar on resolutions and ordinances. Item number ten A two to ten B five.
Katie, I mean, yes, Drinsky.
The motion passes unanimously to approve the consent calendar for resolutions and ordinances with item ten A one removed.
Well, the call now, please read the title to item number ten A one.
Item ten A one is Resolution twenty twenty five seventy eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, establishing requirements for the city's boards and commissions and other related matters.
Brief presentation by staff.
Mayor, and Jason and Pete, if you would like me to, I can give a brief synopsis of this resolution. It is replacing a.
Yeah, thanks, Kenny.
This is a resolution that is replacing one that's from two thousand and three. So this resolution is required by city code for boards and commissions. It's just updating, making sure that it is clear that city council appoints the boards and commission members that they are advisory in nature with the exception of a specific few that are in the city code. And that council has the authority to remove any board or commission members at their will. And it specifies what the terms are for the boards and commission members unless it's specifically outlined in the city code.
Okay. Let's see. Motion is in order? For the adoption of item number ten one? Councilmember Bergen?
Yes, motion to approve ten A one.
It's removed by Councilmember Bergen, second by?
Coombs.
Second by Councilmember Coombs to approve item number ten A one. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
So I do just want to confirm kind of what was stated in section two and what was stated by Katie, which is that whatever is in city code is what determines and of the responsibilities and operations of the boards and commissions. This resolution does not supersede city code.
Okay, very well. Further discussion?
Sorry, Mayor, I was gonna, can I answer that real quick?
Please.
Just to be clear, yes, the resolution does not trump city code. So anything that's in the city code stays as is. The resolution does not change anything that's in city code as it's written.
Okay, very well. Further discussion? I see none. Call for the question on the adoption of ten A one.
Katie, I mean, yes, Drinsky.
The motion passes unanimously to adopt item ten A one.
I just want to say that I spoke out of turn during public comment period. The mayor does not control the public comment period. Let me defer to the city attorney on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we are, we're realizing with the versatile session with the public comment, the listening session, that we need to have the rules stated. So there isn't an ability for the mayor, or really for anybody, to stop somebody who's not speaking on a non-agenda or on an agenda item during public comment. All we can do is just put the rules out first, but that's the design of the of the listening session. It is, however, the mayor's requirement that as we go through the agenda, if there are individuals that are speaking on agenda items that are not talking about the agenda item, the mayor will give one warning. If the person still continues to not talk about this particular agenda item, they can be terminated from their speaking. But again, I just want to make that clear. I heard some of the comments during the public comment listening session. The mayor is correct that there, people can pretty much talk about whatever they want, the way it's set up, and we will work on getting rules stated on that session for the next time.
Very well. Um, I'm sorry, who's it? Councilmember Bergen?
Yeah, just clarification. So in the, we can't have anybody from staff cut that off. Correct?
Correct. I mean, so we're going to work through that because right now we do have, it's the city clerk or the designated that facilitates the public comment listening session under council rules. So we're going to work to see what we can do to do that. That was the first time that that's occurred during the public comment listening session, and it could go back to because we do have the new rules on the public comment listening session, whether council even cares that people want to talk about agenda items during that that time. Now, you may not, you may. But that was, I did talk to the city manager briefly after the public comment listening session. He said that was back in the day where public comment was unlimited and council didn't want individuals taking up all of the public comment section to talk about agenda items. So I think that's something that council can talk about if they want to even take it. But again, it's, right now it's thirty minutes. It's two minutes a person. They can talk about whatever they want, right? Because we really, it's not part of the council meeting, so the mayor doesn't run it. And I just wanted to make that clear because of what was stated.
But in in the future, we'll just make a statement upfront?
That's what I was talking to the city manager and Katie about. Just make sure that our vendor that runs those has that, those rules, that they can read that out loud. We just haven't had that happen.
Okay, thank you.
Do we need to enact that through a resolution? Is that a rule?
We, we probably do. I think what we can look at is whoever wants to direct my office to do that, we can get a resolution drafted for the next meeting, just to make it in the rules about whether or not, you know, again, whether or not council really cares what people talk about during the public comment listening session. As long as it's not threatening, as long as it's not the other items that are being.
Sure. So the status quo, I'm sorry, the status quo is that there's just a thirty minute time limit and two minutes per person, right? Okay, Councilmember Bergen?
Sorry, but the statement saying at the beginning that just says this is for non-agenda items can be done without us having to vote.
That's correct. And so we're gonna, so operationally, the city manager, Basso, is gonna get that taken care of. That's already in council.
Okay. Very well. We're clearly not, please read the title of item number twelve A.
Mayor, we have item eleven A first. It is the public hearing and consideration of ordinance twenty twenty five sixty eight. Amending chapter one thirty five of the city code and adding section one forty six four two three K to the unified development ordinance pertaining to plugged oil and gas wells. And this is a public hearing.
Item number eleven A. Person. Hmm, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. With one sheet off. Okay, there we go. I will click now, please, to the title of item number eleven A.
Item eleven A is consideration of ordinance twenty twenty five sixty eight in a public hearing for the ordinance amending chapter one thirty five of the city code and adding section one forty six four two three K to the unified development ordinance pertaining to plugged oil and gas wells.
Public hearing is now open. Presentation by staff?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jeffrey Moore, manager of the city's energy and environment division. Let me show my slides here, and I'll have a brief presentation for you. Good. Thanks for your time this evening. Looking forward to speaking briefly about this topic of setbacks around plugged wells. Remembering that a plugged well is one that has ended its productive life. It's no longer producing. Surface equipment has been removed. Cement has been placed inside the well bore underground, and it's been covered back up, so there's nothing visible on the surface. Currently, the city has sixty-eight plugged wells. We will have hundreds more in the future because one day all the wells that are currently producing will be plugged when you look forward decades from now. About half of those have been replugged, so plugged a second time since two thousand and twenty. We believe that most wells will be replugged in the future. There's some reasons for that. One is to stop leaks. We've not had any leaks from plugged wells in Aurora, but we know other jurisdictions that have. To avoid risk, protect our aquifers, and there's a state requirement with the Energy and Carbon Management Commission to replug certain wells before drilling a new one within fifteen hundred feet. Replugging of a well is not difficult, but it requires a lot of equipment that has to be placed right around the point of the plugged well itself. The picture on the screen there is a picture from an actual replugging in the city of Aurora. This is in South Shore. It was the Medsco well back in two thousand and twenty one. And you can see a variety of equipment there that has to be placed and brought in, and the rig certainly has to be placed right over the top of the well. Surrounding jurisdictions already have this setback in code, including Adams County and Repo County, Weld County, most of the front range jurisdictions. Because these regulations would apply not to oil and gas operators but to developers, we have worked explicitly with the development community over the last year and a half to understand their perspectives, hear any concerns, and we've made some changes in our plan. So here's where we are. We have a three-pronged approach. The first is what we call the setback area that would apply to the land and any surface owner. That provides the space around the plugged well with no permanent structures inside that space. We will establish that by adding setbacks to the U D O. The main parameters are the size, which is one hundred and fifty feet by one hundred and fifty feet, also twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet. That's about half an acre. And additionally, no utilities within twenty-five feet, no buildings within fifty feet, no residences, schools, or hospitals within one hundred feet. The benefits are that space can be used by developers for requirements for parks and open space and other features as long as it's in compliance with the PROS manual. The second feature is the easement that would be granted by the property owner to the city. Very similar to how an aviation easement is granted to the city now in areas around the airports. The goal was to provide limited access to city staff to the setback area for non-invasive soil testing. This is a handheld instrument that would be used to determine if there's any elevation of hydrocarbons in the soil. We would do that by assigning easement document that would be recorded at the county level. This additionally provides communication to future property owners that the easement is in place and that there is a plugged well there on the property. It's permanent, runs with the land, applies to the surface, and it would allow city staff to access without any further approvals. Thirdly is the replugging authority that would apply to licensed operators with the state. The goal would be to repair a well or bring it up to modern standards if needed. You would need a permit from the state ECMC and a surface use agreement with the landowner. It does require that the operator would reclaim the surface back to its original purpose and use and condition once the work is done. That was very important to the development community. The benefits are it provides protection to people and the environment by repairing leaking wells or preventing pollution. We have made some changes over time. Again, this is in consultation with the development community. Originally, we had proposed a structure where the city had most of the authority. That authority is now shared between the city landowner and the operator. The size, we've reduced it from two hundred by two hundred, which is about an acre, to one fifty by one fifty, or just over half an acre. Originally, we were planning to use an easement structure only, a document only. We're now using the structure I just mentioned on the previous slide with setbacks in the U D O, limited easement document to the city, and then the operator would need a permit from the state and approval from the landowner. In terms of locating a well, we do still require a developer to physically locate the well so that they can survey it. They survey it so it can go accurately on the site plan. This is another method of communicating the location of that plug well to future parties. The well condition, we originally asked the developers to determine the condition themselves and replug the wells if leaking. We've changed that where the city and the state inspectors would work together to determine the condition. And generally speaking, the state would replug a well as an orphan well if there's no current operator assigned to that well. Above ground utilities setback was reduced from fifty feet to twenty-five feet. Low ground utilities still at twenty-five feet, but there's an option for the city engineer to approve a shorter distance. Access to a public road, twenty-four foot width. That's a requirement from Aurora Fire Rescue. Existing structures are still exempted. No change there. Anything that is already constructed at the time that this is approved, if it is, would be exempted. And then finally, we originally had the residential setback of a hundred feet. That's still the same, but we added schools and hospitals at the recommendation of the development community. Now, I want to show you this visually. What you're seeing here is an aerial view of that perk where the Medsco well was replugged back in two thousand and twenty one. And if there was a setback area there now, you can see that in the red outline. The yellow star in the middle is the location of the plugged well. Now, we'll zoom in on that area just a little bit. So the red outline of one fifty by one fifty, it doesn't have to be a square. It could be another shape, a rectangle. It could be an irregular polygon or a circle, as long as we have the space available to bring the equipment in. And it doesn't have to be centered on the well. So the well could be more towards one of the corners of the square. In that case, the other setbacks would start to kick in. The utility setback of twenty-five feet, any kind of building setback fifty feet, and then a residential setback of a hundred feet. Now, how can the setback area be used? If the use is a rural area where it's agricultural livestock, those can continue without any change at all. In urban area, parks and open space, as long In urban area, uh parks and open space, as long as they are in compliance with the pros manual. Uh, can definitely these these spaces, the setback area could be used for those spaces, can also be a parking lot or detention pond. Uh, on the picture on the screen, that is that uh park where the Medscurwell was replugged in twenty twenty one. You can't see the plugged well, uh but it is there underground. But the key thing is there's space available around that plugged well. If we ever have to get back into that to do future work. Whether it's five years from now or fifty years from now, we have the space available. We can access it without any issue. In terms of our history, we've gone through the standard review process of the city, uh beginning with the Development Review Advisory Board. The oil and gas advisory committee also uh reviewed and approved this. P E D Planning is only commission and study session and uh here at city council this evening. Um, staff believes this is a is a good opportunity for the city to prepare for the future. And make sure we maintain this space around plugged wells. So that if there needed to be access in the future, it can be done um with minimum disruption to the community. Uh, thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Um, thank you for the presentation. Uh, uh Katie, is there anyone one who wishes to be heard on this issue?
Yes.
First speaker is Ante. Ante, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you, uh Ms. Kathy. Voices from across Aurora have been clear. Plugged wells. Still pose risk and our ordinances must reflect that reality. Overlooking overlooking setbacks and and easements would be a failure to protect the very people you are sworn to serve. The cost of inaction will be paid in public health crises, property damage and trust loss. Experts have testified for years about the hazards tonight. It's a time to translate those facts into law. The U D O amendment should be more than a checkbox. It should be a declaration that your city will not gamble with safety. Health and justice are linked. Environmental hazards who often hit marginalized communities first and the hardest. Enacting this measure. With the strongest possible language sends a message that we value lives over corporate convenience. Modernizing our policies ensures we do not repeat mistakes of the past. Our residents deserve to feel safe in their homes without worrying about invisible threats beneath their feet. Upholding that safety is a core duty to local government. That is why, because of council members Jurinsky, Sundberg and Castal do not have the interest of community centered.
Uh, please uh stay on uh item number eleven A. Please stay on topic. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this issue?
Yes, next is Midian. Midian, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Validating the need for stronger setbacks and easements around plugged oil wells is not just a matter of compliance. It's a matter of protecting human life and environmental health. Our neighborhoods, especially those historically left out of decision making, deserve ordinances that reflect the latest science and community voices. Toxic remnants from oil operations do not disappear when a well is plugged. Risks persist in soil, groundwater and air. Ensuring an ample buffer zone is a proactive measure to safeguard Aurora's future. The U D O should be a blueprint for responsible development that prioritizes health over haste. Honest governance listens to the residents most impacted by these industrial scars, not just the developers. Equity demands that we consider who lives closest to these wells. Often marginalized families with the least power to relocate. Mandating stronger easements ensures no child grows up breathing in what's left behind. Our responsibility and your responsibility tonight is not only legal, but moral. To choose the path of protection, not profit. Undoing past harms means committing to better, braver policies now. That's why, because Jurinsky, Sundberg and Castal do not have the interest of a community centered.
Please uh stay on the topic to item number eleven A, please.
B, validating the need for stronger setbacks and easements around plugged oil wells is not just a matter of compliance. It's a matter of protecting human life and environmental health. Oh, neighborhoods, especially those historically left out of decision making, deserve ordinances that reflect the latest science and community voices. T, toxic remnants from oil operations do not disappear when a well is plugged. Risks persist in soil, groundwater and air. E, ensuring an ample buffer zone is a protective measure to safeguard Aurora's future. T, the U D O should be a blueprint for responsible development that prioritizes health over haste. H, honest governance listens to the residents most impacted by these industrial scars. E, equity demands that we consider who lives closest to these wells. N, mandating stronger easement ensures no child grows up breathing what is left behind. Oh, our responsibility tonight is not legal but moral. U, undoing past harms means committing to better, braver policies now. P, I just spelled out. Vote them out.
Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this issue?
We have another one, Loronda. Loronda, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, vested interests will tell you that current setbacks are good enough. Our role as resident is to remind you that good enough has never been good enough when lives are on the line. The proposed undue amendment must close loopholes that allow unsafe development near plugged wells. Enforcable, measurable protections are the only way to ensure long-term safety. Take into account the environmental justice dimension. Who will live near these sites if protections are weak? History shows it will be those with the fewest resources to fight back. Every decision you make here is a reflection of your commitment to equity. Minimizing hazards now means fewer tragedies in the future. Our ordinance should be a shield for the people, not a concession to industry. Use your vote to protect health, land and trust in government. This is why. We need people that's gonna stand for us. In every way. And we need those who's not gonna stand with us at all, which include Jurinsky and Sundberg.
Please stay on topic.
So please vote them out. Thank you.
And that was the last speaker.
Um, are there any questions uh for staff? Uh, from council? Uh, seeing that motion is in order. I'm see, I'm sorry, see the public hearing is now closed and a motion is in order.
Mayor, motion to approve eleven A.
Approved by council member Gardner, second by.
Who's?
Second by council member Cruz to approve item number eleven A discussion. I see no discussion called the question on the adoption of item number eleven A.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurinsky.
Councilmember Bergen.
Put it in these pride, yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt item eleven A.
Well, go now. Please read the title to item number eleven B.
Item eleven B is public hearing consideration without related ordinance considering appeal by the applicant regarding the planning and zoning commission decision of denial. For the QuickTrip four two six three site plan and conditional use.
Public hearing is now open. Um. And uh uh presentation by staff.
Good evening, Mayor Kaufman and members of the Aurora City Council. My name is James Sharman and I'll be providing the staff presentation. For agenda items eleven B and eleven C appeals by the original applicant for QuickTrip four two six three.
Hey, James, can you hold on one second? I'm sorry, Mayor. Uh, council member Hancock.
Well, I was just gonna leave the room, but uh. Uh, on this matter, I am going to recuse myself and I will exit the meeting at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Hancock. Sorry about that, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure it's clear to the record.
Okay, is it necessary for her to exit the meeting?
It is, um, because if we were in council chamber, she would need to, she would step out. So we'll ask her to jump off the meeting. I'll text her when we uh. When we get back. I want to make it clear that she's gonna recuse herself on both eleven B and eleven C. Uh, so it's great for the record. And then I'll text you when we're done.
Is there is there further uh staff presentation on uh? Um, item number eleven C?
Yes, I'll continue, Mayor. Thank you.
I'm sorry, eleven B, I'm sorry. Um, oh, a question, uh, city attorney, can I do eleven B and eleven C together and then? Uh, in terms of presentations and questions and then vote uh separately on that?
Unfortunately not, because each public hearing has to stand on its own in case one of them, yeah, so we have to do it separately. But I I'm sure James can can vander through that, so there's enough on each to to do it efficiently.
Very well.
I'll preface that it will be the.
Please proceed with the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Kaufman. Uh, I will preface that it will be the presentation, the same presentation for both items. Agenda items eleven B and eleven C entail a public hearing to appeal a decision of denial by the planning commission. Regarding a site plan and conditional use for a vehicle fueling station. And a five thousand three hundred and twelve square foot convenience store located on four point eight three four acres. The site is located in the southwestern portion of the city in a shopping center bound by South Parker Road to the northeast and South Havana Street to the west. Here are some photos of the site to provide context. The photo on the left uh is taken from Parker Road facing west and the photo on the right is on Havana Street facing east. The site plan proposes a fueling canopy internal to the site and a convenience store planned to front along South Havana Street. Streetscape improvements, including detached sidewalks and new curbside landscaping, were proposed on both the Parker and Havana frontages. And these are the proposed elevations showing the convenience stores architecture. These items summarize the key components of the staff presentation that occurred on February twelfth, two thousand twenty five. Staff recommended approval both of the site plan and conditional use with one condition of approval to resolve any outstanding technical correction corrections. Prior to site plan recordation. The applicant then proceeded to present their findings on the site plan and conditional use, followed by a period for public comment. Several members of the public raised concern over the number of existing gas stations in this area and the conversion of a local restaurant to another. The commission affirmed this concern and after deliberation denied the conditional use aspect of the application. By denying the conditional use aspect, the planning commission deemed the site plan denied by extension and a moot point for further discussion. The following two slides contain the approval criterion which are applied for this application. This first slide contains the conditional use criteria which pertains to this agenda item eleven B. And to preface, this next slide, it contains the criterion relating to agenda item eleven C being the site plan criteria. Overall, staff request that council review the appeal based on the standards and criteria in this U U D O and the record of decision as well as any testimony. And deliberate and determine whether to uphold, modify or overturn the planning commission's decision as necessary to bring this decision into compliance with the standards. And criteria of this U D O. This concludes the staff portion of the presentation. I'm available to answer any immediate questions, but would allow for the appellants to present their findings next. Uh, if there's no immediate questions.
Uh, very well. I I'm sorry, doesn't the applicant go first?
In case there are any uh clarifying questions, Mayor Kaufman.
Okay, well, I think we'll um. Uh, we'll do that. Um, I think that comes a little later.
Okay.
Uh, um. A presentation by uh the applicant, the applicant is limited to a total of fifteen fifteen minutes.
Mr. Mayor, uh David Foster, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Great. We um, I'm uh here on behalf of the applicant, QuickTrip. Um, our address is three sixty South Garfield. Um, let me first thank uh James and and your entire staff for the work that they've done. Uh, on this project and introduce the team that we've assembled uh around the table as well. Um, for for today's hearing. Uh, Jessica Globus and Craig Romrell uh with QuickTrip. Uh, Marcus Pockner and Sky Stewart uh with Pockner and Associates. They're not around the table, but they are online. Uh, Shelby Madrid and Jeff Plank with Kim Lee Horn are civil engineers and Amelia Stefan uh with my office. Uh, there will be a a a few of us presenting. Uh, we will. Uh, based on the determination made, we'll be presenting some of this material twice. Uh, but uh we'll try and do it uh as quickly uh as possible, but making sure that the. Um, uh, making sure that all of the evidence is in the record.
And James, would you be able to share our PowerPoint for us? That might be easier or I can. Figure it out, but.
You give me a moment. Sure, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Then you guys won't have to see our.
Yeah.
Uh, but let me, let me continue moving uh down the road. Um. Because it was referenced already that we appealed uh the decision by the uh planning and zoning commission timely. Um, and I just want to make reference to page four forty nine of your council agenda commentary. Uh, where the city attorney opines on what the standard of review is. Uh, for today, and I appreciated the fact that the attorney's office did that. Um, your review is based on the standards and criteria in the U D O. So you sit as though you were the planning and zoning commission. Uh, you also have a chance to review the record decision. The hearing, the findings from the planning and zoning commission as well. Um, James did put up a quick slide with a a few of the summary points uh related to um that decision. Uh, he mentioned that there were too many uh fueling stations in the area and there was some concern about the loss uh of a restaurant. Um, so again, your decision tonight will be to uphold, modify or overturn. Overturning would mean approving um this conditional use and ultimately site plan. Uh, once you've done your own review and make your own decision, uh but you're again not ba- bound by the decision of the planning and zoning commission. I'm gonna turn it over to Jessica uh to talk uh briefly about QuickTrip. Uh, and then um we will continue uh on with the review criteria. And we are. We can.
Yeah, if you're ready for the PowerPoint, we are.
Amelia, I just uh realized that the uh file sent over to me was a PDF. I didn't want to lose any of your guys' PowerPoint features. I can throw the PDF up if you want. Otherwise, you guys should present.
We, are we putting it up?
Yeah.
All right.
Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jessica.
All right, thank you, David. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to do a quick background on QuickTrip, just in case you don't know who we are. QuickTrip is also known as Q T. We were founded in nineteen fifty eight in Oklahoma. We are a privately held convenience store and we have over eleven hundred stores. Now we're in seventeen states and county. A few things about QuickTrip. The the most exciting thing for me is our purpose to provide opportunities for employees to grow and succeed. And I just like to tell my personal story because I connect with that. Um, I started as a part-time clerk in high school. When I was sixteen and stayed with the company through uh college. And then after I graduated, I came back and. Worked my way through different positions in the office and now I'm here in Colorado in the real estate department. Uh, you'll hear similar stories from lots of other QuickTrip employees and it's something we're really proud of. We are also privately owned and operated by a the Kadjo family and the employees. We strive to be a top operator. We get awards for our clean bathrooms, top customer service. And we also have a full-service kitchen in every location where we have made to order fresh food. We've also never laid off an employee in the history of the company. And then we do contribute five percent of our net profits to charitable organizations in the communities where we have stores. Think, Sky.
Turn this over to Sky and Marcus.
Wonderful. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sky Stewart with the Pockner Company to share a little bit about community outreach efforts on this site. Um, you can see here on the map, the proposed location and staff already described that in the staff reports. Um, it is located along two prominent retail and commercial corridors. And really provides an opportunity to serve the southbound traveling public on South Parker Road where there is not another. Uh, fueling station in close proximity for that southbound traffic there. Um, you will see on a a future slide some context about our zoning, which is M U C. Um, you can keep it on that same slide, Amelia. Uh. No problem. Um, it's important to note that the the zoning all around the site is also that mixed-use commercial zoning. So it really fits in with the context there. You also will hear tonight from some of the neighboring businesses that are on that site, those of you who are familiar, know Epic. You also will hear tonight from some of the neighboring businesses that are on that site, those of you who are familiar, know Epic and Lenny's Golf, you will hear from the landlord on that site who really is supportive of this application um, in terms of the safety and security that we believe QuickTrip will create onsite. They, um, have lots of measures in place to really improve security, have twenty-four hour lights, camera, action, uh, action on the site that, that keeps that site more safe and allows really for visibility for Epic and Lenny's, um, uh, maintained along the, the viewing corridors of that site. Next slide. Wanted to share some site context, understanding the importance of this particular location along the Havana Business Improvement District and the subarea that they've really branded, the Havana Motor Mile, that, um, is described in that third bullet point from their website. So named for the many dealerships, repair shops, and auto parts businesses that happen along that corridor. We think we fit in really well with that context, um, and recognize the importance of the Havana B I D as a, a stakeholder in this conversation. Next slide. Just sharing a little bit about process. Um, QuickTrip did, as required by the city, submit the application and provide notice to adjacent property owners and fifteen R and Os. There were no comments received as part of that process, and so we moved on to Planning Commission. As you heard from the staff report, um, some new concerns were raised during that Planning Commission conversation. And so we continued the outreach efforts following Planning Commission to talk with the Havana B I D Board in April and hold a neighborhood meeting in July, um, to really make sure that we are engaging with the concerned stakeholders in the area. We're now tonight at the city council hearing and we'll talk a little bit more about community outreach on the next slide. You can see here, we really operate on what we call a concentric circle model of outreach where you talk to the most adjacent and affected neighbors first and then broaden out to the, the broader community. So you will see in this listing, um, talking with those neighboring businesses, restaurants, providers there, um, reaching out to the, the registered neighborhood organizations and holding that community meeting. And then also broadening out to the Havana B I D Board presentation, uh, and other businesses in the area and engagement with the Aurora Chamber of Commerce. We will note that we would continue, uh, our commitment to outreach even after this hearing tonight is over and continue to engage with the Havana B I D as a really important stakeholder and continue our engagement with the Aurora Chamber and neighboring businesses. Next slide. We really consider, um, QuickTrip's commitment to giving as part of continuation and confirmation of their outreach, um, commitment. As Jessica mentioned, they have a corporate policy of investing five percent of net profits in local groups and you can see on this slide some of the ways that QuickTrip has engaged in communities, uh, throughout the metro area, including Aurora. Um, really just want to underscore that we believe that is, uh, an extension of the community outreach that we help QuickTrip with, um, as they bring new sites forward in different communities. And I will turn it back over to, I believe, David to walk through criteria.
Thank you, Sky. You're so much better than Marcus, so appreciate you being here. Um, site zoning, you can see that we're zoned to M U C, mixed-use commercial, um, subarea A. Um, the allowable use on this site is the convenience store and the conditional use that we're seeking approval for in this hearing is for the motor vehicle fueling station. What I'd like to direct, um, your attention to is, um, the staff did a wonderful, um, staff report uh, back in February, February twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. It's on page five eighty of your agenda packet. And then our appeal letter, uh, appears dated two twenty-one twenty-five, page six eighteen in your agenda packet, uh, as we go through the review criteria, uh, for this conditional use permit. And, uh, again, it's under code section one forty-six dash five point three point thirteen. Uh, well, that's the appeal. And then the conditional use criteria is one forty-six, five point four point three point eight point three. Starts with the application complies with the applicable standards in the U D O. And here, the application complies with the applicable standards of the code because as shown in the site plan, the design of the application meets all the requirements of your U D O. B, the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The properties located within a commercial hub, place, type, early comprehensive plan. Primary uses in the commercial hub are retail, commercial service, and restaurants, as well as shared outdoor areas and social gathering spaces. Fueling stations are commercial service, uh, uses and QuickTrip's business model includes a robust retail element in which fresh food can be purchased onsite with gathering areas to rest and eat. Therefore, the application fits squarely within the commercial hub place type and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. C is that the size, scale, height, density, um, is, uh, consistent, compatible with, um, plant uses in the surrounding area. Uh, a traffic study was completed that accompanies this middle package and we're in performance. QuickTrip is committed to providing a high level of architectural design for the proposed convenience store and fuel canopy and both structures will be compliant with the code. Uh, D, the proposed use will not change the predominant character of the surround area. In this particular review criteria, the application proposes a convenience store and fueling station which will contribute to the commercial character of the area because in addition to fuel, QuickTrip offers fresh food, sidewalks, paths, and outdoor seating areas around the building. Yes, as was evident, um, and made reference to at the Planning Commission, there are other fueling stations in the area. But again, that is part of the character of the surrounding area. What is important is the record of decision, which we spoke to just a few moments ago, that members of the commission and the public stated that they would like the property to become another restaurant. And of course, um, anybody who's been to Sam's Number Three loves Sam's Number Three, they can't get enough of nineteen pages of menu items. And people are disappointed with its closure, but that's not a review criteria. And secondly, the issue of too many gas stations in this particular area is also not a review criteria. Those are the issues on the record of decision. Uh, too many gas stations. Now, that isn't to say, and I think it's important to mention this, that isn't to say that the city council can't adopt standards, setback and separation standards between fueling stations. We've seen that in a number of local jurisdictions. Denver, uh, has adopted, almost, has almost curtailed, uh, the construction of new gas stations. So city council has that authority, but in this particular instance, we feel like it wasn't one of the review criteria uh, that should have been relied upon. E, the city's existing infrastructure and public improvements are adequate. Here, this criterion is met because the applicant is making improvements to the existing infrastructure and public amenities. F, the application demonstrates that the proposed use will not create significant dislocations of tenants. Here, we'll likely have testimony tonight, but the owner of the property has agreements in place with the surrounding tenants agreeing to mitigate any tenant dislocation or decrease in business due to activity on the property. And finally, G-
The appellant, um, you have two more minutes for your presentation. I just wanted to give you a time warning.
Oh, I, I really appreciate that. Uh, G, this is the last review criteria. The application mitigates any adverse impacts on the surrounding area to the degree probable. As stated in the staff report, the applicant, the application mitigates the potential adverse impacts to the surrounding area. Development partially screened with landscaping and amenities to soften the view of the adjacent right-of-way. Convenience store will have food and store deliveries as needed on Monday through Friday daytime delivery schedules. Deliveries are anticipated to occur during daytime non-peak hours wherever possible. Parking is not proposed to a but Parker Road. And we're consistent with the city standards. Stormwater quality treatment system exists off-site to treat runoff, improve water quality, and mitigate water pollution. I want to just reemphasize that those are the review criteria that are in front of you tonight for this conditional use approval. We are obviously all here to answer any questions that you may have, um, either now or after public comment and we sure hope that you approve the conditional use tonight.
Thank you. Well, um, I'm going to entertain questions just a little bit later. Um, uh, presentation by the appellant?
Mayor, the applicant is the appellant in this case.
Okay, very well. Uh, is there anyone, um, who wishes to be heard on this item?
Yes.
First, we have Robert. Robert, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone.
Yep. Uh, if I could say this, uh, start the time over, but let me, uh, uh, the, our city attorney wants me to say, make the statement. Um, that, um, uh, before a speaker starts, um, that they should s- start out giving their name, their real name and whether or not they are, uh, an Aurora resident and whether they support or oppose or are neutral about the item, uh, on appeal. Uh, and if the speakers fail to state those items, it is appropriate for, uh, the mayor to stop them, uh, to ask them to do so. It's part of the appeal process. Oh, uh, so your time will start over. Please proceed.
Okay, Robert, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is Robert Hatch. I'm here on behalf of the owners of twenty-five eighty and twenty-six fifty South Havana Street. The property that's the subject of this appeal. I'm not a resident of, uh, of Aurora, uh, but I'm, uh, representing the owner of the, of that property in Aurora. And the owners have concluded that leasing this site to QuickTrip is the best decision, not just for themselves, but for the surrounding tenants and the broader community. So they're in full support of, um, of both, uh, of the matters that are before, uh, you tonight. Uh, so, um, the support from the community includes Epic Mountain Gear, which is a valued and historic retail business directly adjacent to the site, as you probably know, as well as Lenny's Golf and Ski, which is also adjacent. Both have expressed their support for QuickTrip citing enhanced security presence and superior lighting that will help deter, uh, criminal activity particularly during nighttime hours. QuickTrip's advanced monitoring cameras are exceptional and they have a, a pretty centralized security system that will s- significantly reduce the site's appeal to criminal elements. Uh, in addition, that to the security issues, QuickTrip offers a pretty modern energy hub for both traditional electric vehicles and brings innovative, uh, flexible approach that will, we believe, evolve alongside changes in the energy sector and, uh, more so than its, uh, competitors. Um, and QuickTrip also has, uh, a really a pretty, pretty impressive kitchen, um, beverages. I mean, it's not your average, uh, convenience store, really. Um, and the strong grocery offering is, uh, particularly impressive. I know I shop there. My, uh, family enjoys the farmer's brand milk and that's where we get it. Um, it's community conscious, too. They contribute to, uh, meaningful donations, uh, to, uh, causes of local concern in Aurora. Uh, so the property owners I represent are third-generation Coloradans. Uh, their children and grandchildren, uh, they also call this state home. Uh, they care deeply about Aurora's future and are committed to making decisions that reflect the values and needs of the community. And after really substantial consideration and evaluating many, many options and other uses, they have determined that QuickTrip is the best fit for this location and will provide real value and enhance security to the neighborhood. So we hope you'll agree and on behalf of the owners, I respectfully request your approval of QuickTrip's application. Thank you.
Next is Ante. Ante, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Please, uh, let, please state your, uh, please say your name, uh, your real name.
I heard you the first time, Mike.
Whether or not you're, uh, a resident of the city.
I heard you the first time, Mike. Thank you. All right, let's start, let's, I'll start. Ante, name. Uh, I am, um, opposed and, uh, residency according.
Are you a resident of Aurora?
Can I finish the sentence?
No.
According to Mayor Kaufman, I am a resident of Aurora.
Very well, proceed.
According to Mayor Kaufman, I am a resident of Aurora.
I don't believe-
As I was trying to state, anyways, voice after voice have expressed concern that QuickTrip's four-two-six-three proposed use does not align with the best interest of the neighborhood.
Against the proposal.
Over- Didn't I say opposed?
Very well, proceed.
Do you have any more questions before I, before I read my speech?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Or I'll start over. Voice after voice has expressed concern that QuickTrip's four-two-six-three proposed use does not align with the best interest of the neighborhood. Overturning the denial would ignore months of community input and expert review. The Planning and Zoning Commission acted to protect residents from increased traffic hazards, noise, and safety risk. Every appeal should enhance, not erode, the trust between residents and their city leaders. This is not just about one convenience store. It's about how seriously we take, we take the precedent set for conditional uses citywide. Honoring the commission's decisions, decision affirms that local governance is responsive to those who live, uh, live here. Ensuring that de- that developments are safe, sustainable, and equitable must guide land use, every, excuse me, must guide, must guide every land use decision. Marginalized communities should not be the default dumping ground for high-impact commercial projects. Our responsibility is to uphold fairness, safety, and long-term neighborhood stability. Unite behind a decision that values residents over rapid development. That is why you must vote out Jurinsky, Sundberg, and Casal because they don't have your interest as community-centered.
Next is Hashim. Hashim, go ahead.
Yes, Hashim Coats, United States Navy veteran, resident, longtime resident of Aurora, and I am against this. Facing land, facing large-scale derailments through our existing com- commissions is how we ensure growth works for the people, not just corporations. Override a denial without addressing the core or community concerns undermines this process entirely. The QuickTrip four-two-six-three plan, as submitted, raises unresolved issues regarding safety, environmental impact, and traffic management. Equitable development requires that we do not push forward when neighborhoods have clearly said this does not work for us. Time and time again, when these warnings are ignored, it's vulnerable communities who bear the cost. Holding the line of the commission's decisions is an act of respect for both process and people. Economic development that truly benefits a city never comes at the expense of its residents' health and safety. Making the exception here sends the wrong signal to every future applicant. Our role is to create a city where growth uplifts rather than destabilizes. Uphold the denial. Show that Aurora's leaders are guided by principle, not pressure, not cash. That is why, because Jurinsky, Sundberg, and Casal do not have the-
Rough traffic gun.
Centered.
Last, we have Midian. Midian, go ahead.
Midian, for privacy, I will not disclose my residency and I oppose. B, visibility into the full impacts of a development like QuickTrip forty-two sixty-three is essential before overturning the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial. O, our city commissions exist to safeguard the balance between growth and community well-being and that balance must not be undermined by appeals that disregard valid concerns. T, traffic congestion, increased pollution, and safety risks are legitimate issues raised by residents and commissioners alike. E, every conditional use approval should be grounded in a demonstrated benefit to the surrounding neighborhood, not just corporate expansion. T, the integrity of your process is at stake if you allow an appeal to bypass community-centered planning. H, history shows that developments disproportionately impact low-income and systemically impacted neighborhoods when approvals are rushed. E, evaluating this appeal with the community's quality of life and mind must come before any financial gain. M, maintaining the commission's decision affirms that public safety, health, and equitable development come first. O, our residents trust that decisions made here honor their voices, not override them. U, upholding the denial tonight sends a clear message that the public's interest is non-negotiable. T, that is why on this topic, it resonates most with me to say that I just voted out, vote them out on Jurinsky, Sundberg, and Casal.
That was the last one for eleven B.
Good. Very well. Are there any questions of the, I'm sorry, questions of the applicant, Councilmember Bergen?
Yes, thank you. For staff first, this had to go to Planning Commission, not because of the convenience store, but for the conditional use per our UDO for the gas station, correct?
Correct, Councilmember Bergen.
And staff recommended approval?
That was the original recommendation, the staff report.
And that was recommended due to their adherence to the UDO standards and the zoning?
My apologies, to the conditional use criterion.
Right, to the conditional use criteria. So this is kind of atypical, because normally Planning Commission, I've been here for over nine years, they normally adhere to exactly to code and not taking into account just, you know, opinions unless unless those contradict code. So this was highly unusual. Do you know the reasoning for them? I mean, was it just the neighbors that commented during Planning Commission? Was that their concern and too many gas stations?
I'd be happy to elaborate on the commission's finding, Councilor, Councilmember Bergen. Overall, the elegance of conditional use criteria is that they are open-ended, and they allow us to factor in the surrounding circumstances and make sure that a use doesn't generate any sort of adverse impact that would affect the surrounding neighborhood. And so ultimately, staff's interpretation of the conditional use criterion differed from what the Planning Commission found.
Okay. And so what was the adverse conditions that Planning Commission cited?
As I highlighted in the presentation, they were concerned with the large amount of gas stations in the area, and they inferred that finding upon the conditional use criteria.
But that's not a condition in our code, number of gas stations?
The key word being inferred.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then for the applicant or appellant, I mean, I have a question on, I know residents were upset that the Sam's number three is not still there as a restaurant. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they wanted to purchase, I guess, the land, and the landlord was not wanting to sell to anyone. And so that, therefore, the restaurant chose not to sign a lease. Is that correct?
That is our understanding, yes.
Okay. And so obviously landlord has property rights and can sell or not sell. Can you talk briefly about the, you said that there is no gas station on the south side of Parker as as traffic is going south?
Yes. Thanks, Councilwoman Bergen. In close proximity, if you are traveling southbound on Parker, there's nothing, you know, within a general area that you could get to without having to cross over Parker Road. So we think it provides an opportunity for those traveling southbound on Parker Road to have access to fueling that they could not safely or easily access in another way. And we do have some maps we can share if you're interested in seeing those that show, you know, general proximity of gas stations. I think because that is not a criteria, we didn't want to make it a focus of our conversation. We certainly did look at what other proximity there is. And on that southbound side of Parker Road, there's really nothing in close proximity that somebody traveling southbound could access easily.
Okay, thank you very much.
Further questions of the applicant?
Mayor?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Kasal.
Okay, so for the applicant, so you did say that you will you will do everything to provide security, but did you conduct a neighborhood meeting, and what was the outcome? And then also, another question for me is, why did you not reach out to Havana BID? And can you explain to me that?
Sky, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I'm happy to take it. And Jessica, if I leave anything out, feel free to jump in. We did notice for a neighborhood meeting, according to the city code, on who you, a notice area, reached out, did mailings to a notice area, and again, notice went to fifteen registered neighborhood organizations initially. We did set up and host that meeting. We did not have anyone but the landlord show up to that meeting, but we did offer an opportunity for neighbors who had concerns to come hear more about the proposal and share those concerns with us. In terms of the Havana BID, they were not a required notice participant. And I think going into it, I will just say, it may have been a misstep on all of our parts to not think to reach out to them early in advance. We typically coordinate very, very well with the Aurora Chamber and had not thought to reach out to Havana BID. After hearing some of their concerns, we did repeatedly spend time talking with the executive director and the chair of their board. We did meet with their BID board to try and address their concerns and their questions and really share what we hope to see on the site. And again, we're committed to continuing that conversation and outreach even after tonight.
Okay, I have, let's see, I'm sorry, Councilmember Medina, Coombs, and then Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, mine's for the appellate. So my question is, how many employees do you normally employ at these locations, and what is the starting pay?
We have an average of twenty-two employees per location. I will have to double-check the starting pay, but I know it's in excess of sixteen something an hour for a part-time clerk and about fifty thousand a year for an assistant manager.
And the other question I have is, do you also give, you said you gave some resources to, I think, APD and a few other nonprofits. Do you do a lot of local nonprofits and things like, you know, youth groups and community groups? I'm just curious about, do you do that money locally in Aurora?
Yes, we actually prefer to do the money locally where we have stores, so that supports the communities where we operate. We have a contributions committee that's made up of store employees and our personnel manager, and they get requests from the community, and then they decide where they want that money to go.
Right. Thank you. Councilmember Coombs.
Yes, Mayor. So thank you all for being here and for your presence, patient. So I just want to reaffirm that, again, the conditional use is the gas station. A lot of the benefit that's being described is the convenience store, and only a small amount of that is the fueling station. And so I wanted to ask if, in terms of the character of the area and the outdoor community gatherings that take place, outdoor dining was mentioned as part of the UDO, whether or not the impact of fueling stations, both in terms of odor and noise on those types of leases, was taken into consideration, either in the staff recommendation or in the account response? I guess James first, in terms of staff recommendation.
I appreciate the direction, Councilmember Coombs. In my initial staff report to the Planning Commission, we did factor in the Canopy's overall location, and the fact of the matter is, it's largely internal to that triangular shopping center, which we thought was the best location for proposed fuel station. And it's partially screened, not only by the convenience store fronting along Havana, but also existing development to the north. Much, much more preferable than it being cited directly along Parker or along the street.
Okay. I mean, oftentimes gatherings are held within, so I'm not sure that in terms of that, that quite addresses that issue. But then, oh, sorry, I'll let the columnist respond to that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. You know, this is a commercial hub under the conference of plans. So obviously, we're not in the middle of a park. You know, it's at a pretty busy intersection, lots of cars, you know, traversing daily. What you haven't seen yet, because we're just on the conditional use permit portion of the hearing, is the site plan. To get a better understanding of where we're locating that internal facility to lunch, to picnic, which is a pretty popular place to go at a lot of QTs, for people to come in, get lunch, fuel up, and fuel up their car and their body. And so that's a very, very typical component to our facility. Additionally, we'll have a couple of electric charging stations, which you'll see in the site plan if we make it through this particular hearing. And that takes a couple of additional minutes, as you know, in order to charge cars. And people will use that area to picnic, to fuel up, to eat, which we see at our facilities all of the time.
Thank you for that. And then, Mayor, I just have one other question for staff, which is, it was assessed that the application mitigates adverse impacts to the degree practicable. I was wondering, in terms of the conditional use, if any consideration was given to the ability to redevelop gas station sites when there are no previous gas stations. So it is environmentally difficult. The city has spent a large amount of money to purchase through eminent domain of land that is currently, or that was previously a gas station in order to be able to redevelop that site. So I wonder if that redevelopment impact and redevelopment potentially is taken into consideration in the consideration of favor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coombs. I believe it was a question directed at staff. Largely, you'll see in my original report, that's not explicitly addressed as a potential adverse impact that could be generated by the conditional use. That being said, the citing of the drainage infrastructure attempts to mitigate runoff, especially factoring in the slope of the site. And so by that effort, largely tried to preserve any sort of redevelopment opportunity at the site. And there are apparatus within the city to dedicate funds to brownfield redevelopment if potentially the site were to be redeveloped. That's largely the staff findings on that question.
Thank you.
I have Councilmember Gardner, then Councilmember Lawson, then Councilmember Bergen, and Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions for staff. Is it appropriate to use an application for conditional use permit or site plan to create policy for the city? Is that one of the criteria that should be considered?
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Overall, staff's finding would be that as a result of a decision regarding a public hearing, that it can generate dialogue and discussion to amend the code and direct further amendments in the future. But overall, there's no sort of process for changing the criterion in the midst of a public hearing.
Okay. And then to follow up to that, is having too many of one type of business in an area and/or wanting to bring back the previous use criteria that we should consider?
Overall, I defer back to my response to Councilmember Bergen's question, and that conditional use criteria are deliberately open-ended, as they give us the opportunity to explore all possible conditions in an area. And so while it was staff's opinion that the number of existing gas stations in the area were not a concern in the original report, our commission does comprise citizens of Aurora, and they all came together to decide that it was applicable to the criterion in that circumstance.
Okay. And then lastly, is it true that staff recommended approval because the application met the standards in the UDO?
Yes, and approval is preserved in the minutes, or recommendation of approval.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lawson.
Thank you. My question, I think, will go to the appellate. So I just was wondering, I know that we had the one managed merit. I don't know about this center, how many owners there are, but I do know that there are some strip mall parts of it. And I know there's the Burger King there. And then we have the Sam's kind of right in the, you know, coming, I guess it would be west of Parker Road. I'm probably getting them all mixed up. But have you talked to any of those, have you talked to any of those businesses as well, besides the two that were mentioned today, and about the impact it would have for them?
Yeah, thanks, Colin Palmer. That's a fair question. So Mr. Hatch spoke, and his client actually owns multiple parcels around this particular location. I know that we've also, we were actually anticipating Lenny from Lenny's Golf to show up tonight. His wife just had some surgery. And he was going to, again, I can't testify for Lenny, but I know that he was very happy with this use coming to this location. Sky, Jessica, if you have other familiarity with?
Not to interrupt, but there's other strip malls there that are within that location.
Yeah, Lenny's is part of the strip mall.
So he owns that, okay.
He's immediately adjacent. He's the first retail user in the strip mall, what I would call northeast of the site, right along Parker.
Does he own the, where the, when you're going south on Parker Road, where the Burger King is, there's a part of strip mall there? That's part of this plaza?
That's the one just past the Burger King, Councilman? Is that the one you're speaking of? Yeah, that's where Lenny's is. That's where Lenny's is.
Okay. So you've talked to all of those residents, I mean, all of those businesses. I guess my second one, it is kind of congested in there, in that parking area. It is pretty big, but it is congested. And how people can navigate in there, have, there's been, you said that there was a traffic study kind of done. I'm not talking about coming in and out of the plaza. I'm talking about within the plaza.
Well, yeah, we can speak to that. I will, by the way, I will agree with you, having, I'm a frequent user of that parking lot. And yeah, it's a bit of a mess in there. And the good news is, is that this particular use in that area is going to formalize a lot of the transportation nodes within that huge parking lot. We view it as a big parking lot right now. And the site plan, and again, I know that we're not having a site plan conversation concurrent with this conditional use, but you've maybe seen some of the site plan that really makes its way around behind the Burger King to create more, I would say, separation in that, what I would, what I think is a pretty bad parking lot today. But in terms of traffic, we've done the traffic analysis, we've done traffic studies, the city, your staff has reviewed and approved all of the studies that have been done today.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I wasn't really talking about the traffic study. I'm talking about really what's inside that plaza. And I understand what you're saying. But have you seen how that Burger King kind of goes over and kind of laps over? And I'm pretty sure, like you said, you've been there in other businesses and kind of going in and out. It's not as easy to navigate as you think it is. So I'm glad that you're looking at that. I mean, I do think that it's more important as well, as, you know, on the outside of entering into any place of business, how you navigate when you're inside the business.
Oh, I agree.
Business center. I mean, you know, I mean, there are some tough ones here in the city. And then there are some actual big ones, like Corner Star is awesome. You know, you can navigate pretty freely. But I guess when you're inside of a business center, I think it's really important as well not to have those accidents. Then coming off a Parker Road, I mean, so that's kind of what I was trying to get an answer for. So thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah, Councilwoman. And again, if we make it into the next approval, we'll spend more time on the site plan.
Councilmember Bergen.
Thank you, Mayor. So a traffic study was done, you said, and it met all conditions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's in, it's in conformance with everything?
I'll let your own staff answer the question about.
I'm sorry.
Overall, the traffic study was deemed satisfactory by our traffic division, Councilmember Bergen.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. So I think to Councilmember Gardner's point, we can't, this is for staff, we can't make a change in the middle of a hearing. So if we want to make changes, we would have to do that for future.
That would be my finding as staff. I would also defer to our attorney, Leah McCollum.
Hi. Yes, Councilmember Bergen, you are correct. The criteria is set by the code, and it cannot be changed at this time. And that is the criteria that should be followed in your decision.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions of staff or the applicant? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, and a motion is in order.
Mayor, the appellate does have an opportunity to do a three-minute closing statement to counsel.
Oh, the appellate?
Yeah.
Very well.
We will give your three minutes back to all of you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed, and motion is in order.
Mayor, motion to approve 11B.
Moved by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by-
Sundberg.
Mayor for Tim Sundberg to approve item number 11B discussion. I say no further discussion.
Looks like Lena has hair. I'm sorry. Yeah, I just want to clarify, your options are to uphold the decision by the planning commission, modify it or overturn it. So we need your motion to include that language.
Let me go back. Who, Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, I'll modify my motion. I'll move to overturn the planning commission's decision.
Very well. And so that was moved by Councilmember Gardner, and then I think it was a mayor for Tim, second in the Gardner motion?
Yes.
Okay. And do you agree with the change?
Yes.
Very well.
And Mayor. Pete?
If I may, real quick, so if, because it's the motion overturn, I would ask that part of the motion include adding this to the condition for the approval of a site plan would be resolution of outstanding technical issues prior to recordation of the site plan and issuance of any building permits. Lena, did I get that right?
I'm fine with that, Mayor.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Gardner considers that a friendly amendment?
Yep.
Very well. Further discussion?
Mayor Gardner.
Councilmember Gardner.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, you know, I know that this generates, there's some emotions tied to this, you know, with Sam's having been a longstanding business in the community. But the fact of the matter is, their presence or now non-presence in this shopping center is frankly not relevant whatsoever when making this decision. And for that matter, the number of gas stations in the area, to me, isn't really relevant. You know, if we want to have a policy conversation similar to like what Denver recently did or what some other communities did in terms of spacing between gas stations or certain numbers in certain areas, like, we should have that policy conversation. But creating criteria mid-process for an applicant creates an unfriendly business environment. It creates an environment where businesses don't know what the rules are going to be from one day to the next. And, you know, I loved me some Sam's number three, but that's not relevant here. What is relevant is that, in this case, QuickTrip, in staff's estimation, and in my estimation based upon what we heard tonight, you know, meets all the criteria outlined in our U D O. I don't see a legal reason to say no to this. I do think QuickTrip is, you know, they run good stores, gas stations, whatever we want to call them. I think they're going to be a good, you know, kind of corporate partner in Aurora. They have been so far, been a good corporate partner in Aurora. And ultimately, I think what this really comes down to for me is property rights. The landowner, this is the use that he wants there. And while I understand the fueling station part of this is a conditional use, the convenience store part of it is not a conditional use, it is an allowable use. And so, you know, frankly, I don't think it sends the right message to property owners in Aurora if we change rules midstream and then also say, hey, by the way, we don't like what you want to put on your property, and we're going to create a bunch of criteria that doesn't exist to justify why we say no. And so for all of those reasons, I would urge my colleagues to support overturning the planning and zoning decision.
Well, Councilmember Coons.
Oh, Bergen is next.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Bergen, then Councilmember Coons.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I agree with Councilmember Gardner on those points. I will say, I hear all the time from my constituents in southeast Aurora, they're sick of seeing gas stations. So, you know, that is kind of common. It's the same thing, like, there's too many urgent cares all over the place, or there's too many Walgreens and so forth. So we hear a lot of that. I think, for me, this meets the conditions. I do think it is actually compatible with the area. I would say that if we want to make, you know, changes in code in terms of how many gas stations on what corners or whatever, I think that's something to be done in the future in setting our criteria. Thank you.
Well, Councilmember Coons.
Mayor, thank you. So I agree that the convenience store use, which is a permitted use, absolutely makes sense. And I don't see any reason to oppose that use. However, the conditional use of a gas station is conditional for a reason, right? There is discretion, though, for the planning and zoning commission. Sorry, is someone speaking while I'm speaking? It's a little distracting.
Please proceed. I don't know who's-
Okay. But yeah, so, right, it's conditional for a reason. It allows the planning and zoning commission to have an opportunity to weigh in. It also allows council, if it comes to us, to have an opportunity to weigh in and to address the criteria that are put forward. And we are not required to agree with what staff brings forward. I totally respect the opinions of staff, the work that staff put in to do an advance into assessing the criteria. But we, as representatives of our committee, also have a responsibility to weigh those standards in our own judgment as well. And so my judgment is that regardless of Sam's number three, this has nothing to do with the transit. For me, it's about the fact that spaces like this, right, that happen to have large parking lots, whether they may be very disorganized and hard to use, are spaces that our community does utilize or community gather. And that's negatively affected by having the smell of gasoline and the sounds of illegal fueling. And also that we are responsible for thinking about the beach renovation. And redevelopment is absolutely a part of what happens on the future. And putting more gas stations in an area that's likely to redevelop, redevelop will make it harder to redevelop whatever site may be coming. And this, QuickTrip's not going to be there forever. We're not going to be there forever, and we should be taking responsibility for looking at the future, the decisions that future councils have to make, and that the future of our community sees it before. So for those reasons, I think we should uphold the planning and zoning commission. I think they were also attempting to address issues that were brought to them by the committee and issues that they see within the context of conditional use standard. And so, so for that reason, I will not support the decision to keep that in place.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I call for the question on the adoption of the Gardner motion. On item number 11B.
Thank you. Mayor Kaufman?
Uh, Mayor Rochas.
Councilmember Hancock?
She's recused herself.
Oh, sorry, she abstained. Thank you.
Yeah.
The motion passes with seven yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Coons, Medina, and Mario to overturn the decision of the planning and zoning commission to approve the application, subject to resolution of outstanding technical issues prior to recordation of the site plan and issuance of any building permits.
With the clerk, please read the title to item number 11C.
Item 11C is public hearing consideration without related ordinance to consider an appeal by the applicant regarding the planning and zoning commission decision of denial for QuickTrip 4263 site plan and conditional use.
Presentation by the applicant.
The public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, the public hearing is now open. And presentation by staff.
Thank you, Mayor Kaufman. This, again, is James Shireman. I'll be presenting these F findings for agenda item 11C. All of the same background still applies, but this agenda item discusses the site plan's approval. You'll see on the slide above you, before you, is the site plan approval criterion. Largely, the planning commission denied this aspect of the application because they found that criterion A couldn't be satisfied, being that the application complies with all applicable standards in this U D O, other adopted city regulations, any prepared master plan that includes the property, and any conditions specifically applied to the development of the property by the planning and zoning commission or city council in a prior decision affecting the property, largely being that without a conditional use approval, they could not meet all of the standards in the U D O. And so they deemed the site plan denied by extension. Overall, that provides the staff findings related to the criterion of the site plan element.
Okay. Presentation by the applicant. You have limited to 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and thank you for the approval on the first item. I'd like to ask the city attorney initially if we can incorporate the previous public hearing into this public hearing and then focus just on the review criteria related to the site plan. Would that be acceptable? I, yes, yes.
Yeah, I'll, yes. I mean, I think you can, and then just make whatever you incorporate what happened in 11B, and then just apply your presentation towards the change for the site plan. I think that'd be appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we will incorporate the presentation from B into C. I am going to actually first turn it over to our engineer, Shelby, to walk through the site, why don't we walk through the site plan first, if you're okay with that? And then I'll go ahead and discuss the review criteria.
Good. Hi, I'm Shelby, the driver of Pinley Horn. On the screen you'll see in front of you, the site plan north is up. You have Parker Road to your upper right and Havana Street to your left. I'm going to start with how we're doing some public sidewalk improvements. Those are highlighted in pink, consistent with Havana Street overlay district. The site plan has incorporated detached sidewalks and tree lawns along both frontages of the property. In addition to that green space is the public plaza area that we are referring to right off the exit of the structure there. Now is that outdoor seating plaza. There's a designated fire line that we'll be designating there in orange that'll have an easement over it, and we'll have some pavement improvements and parking lot improvements in order to help direct that traffic internal to the property as we are discussing on the previous item. We're really trying to make, we will be making curb improvements to both the frontages on Parker Road and Havana Street to channelize that traffic coming into and leaving the site, to really help give a better wayfinding experience as you enter and exit the site. Additionally, there will be bus stop improvements in blue up at the top of the screen for the existing bus stop. We'll be improving that, creating a larger bus pad, and bringing that up to R T D standards as they sit today. The building elevations will be consistent with the U D O standards specifically providing, excuse me, incorporating material changes, architectural features such as glazing, textured surfaces, and projections in addition to some color, consistent with the U D O. Next slide, please. The canopy columns for the vehicular fueling canopy will match the same architectural elements so that there is a cohesive and uniform design throughout the entire site.
And so then I'll just kind of head back to the review criteria. And again, I will just make reference to, you know, the staff report, page 581, from February 12th of 2025, that goes through the review criteria. And again, in the letter that we've included, beginning on page 618 of the agenda, site plan general requirements are under 146-5.4.3B, point 2, point C. A, the application complies with applicable standards of this U D O. We have shown that this application meets all the requirements of the U D O, and staff has indicated the same. B, the city's existing infrastructure and public improvements, including but not limited to water, wastewater, street, trail, sidewalk systems have adequate capacity. We've worked with the city staff during the review process of this application, and through appropriate drainage and traffic studies, we've confirmed that the city's existing infrastructure and public improvements are adequate to serve the proposed development. C, major site plan shall be designed to preserve and protect natural areas, ridgelines. Although this isn't located in a natural area or ridgeline or swale or a wetland, we have included high-quality foresighted architecture to seamlessly integrate the convenience store building into the character of the commercial arena. D, the application will improve or expand multimodal connections with adjacent sites, neighborhoods, and urban centers. As Shelby just showed, on the site plan, the application establishes adequate vehicular and pedestrian circulation and connectivity. New sidewalks will be added along Parker and Havana, and a bus station located on Parker Road will be improved to R T D standards. E, the application is compatible with surrounding uses in terms of size, scale, and building facade materials. And again, as previously mentioned, the application proposes a convenience door and canopy that integrates foresighted architecture. F, the application mitigates any adverse impacts on the surrounding area to the degree practicable. And we went into a great amount of detail in the previous hearing around all of the mitigation of potential adverse impacts that this site addresses with its construction. So based on those standards and criteria for your review, we would ask for you to overturn the decision of the planning and zoning commission and approve the site plan as you have before it tonight, for you tonight. Thank you.
Is there any further presentation by the applicant?
We are concluded.
Presentation by the appellate?
Still.
Very well. Does anybody wish to be heard on this issue?
Yes, we have Ante. Ante, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Oppose, and according to Mike Kaufman, resident of Aurora. Voices from the commission and the public have made it clear, the current QuickTrip 4263 site plan is not, is not a good fit for the area. Overriding that decision undermines the very purpose of site planning to ensure developments are safe, compatible, and beneficial to surrounding neighborhoods. The current plan does not adequately mitigate traffic flow, noise, or safety concerns. Every site plan must prove it serves the public interest before it earns approval. Taking shortcuts now will create long-term headaches for residents and the city. Honoring the denial respects both the expertise of the commission and the concerns of the impacted neighbors. Equitable planning means no neighborhood gets stuck with preventable problems because a project was pushed through. Modifying the plan to truly meet community needs should be the starting point, not skipping ahead to the approval. Our decisions tonight will set a precedent for how seriously we take our planning process, upholding the denial that reinforces that precedent. This is what, this is, that is why, because of councilmembers Terensky, Sundberg, and just all-
Warning, you need to stay on topic.
And vote them out. All right. Bye.
Just one moment, Mayor. My screen has frozen. All right. Next, we have Hashim. Hashim, go ahead.
Yeah, Hashim. Hashim, I'm confused with some of the rules. I don't know if it's a warning, been a hangup, or just hang up at the warning. Hashim, I'm confused with some of the rules. I don't know if it's a warning, been a hangup, or just hang up at the warning. But I don't want to be treated differently because I'm a gay man. Hopefully that doesn't happen. But I'm an Aurora resident. And I'm against this. And I think it's important that we verify the site plans that meet all the safety environment and liability criteria. It's not only an option, but it is our obligation. Hopefully, the door without addressing the reasons for denial undermines the rules we put into place to protect the public. T, the QuickTrip four two six three site plan in its current form still leaves too many questions unanswered, questions about the impact on the surrounding community. E, in evidence from similar, excuse me, from similar developments shows that without proper design, changes, traffic safety issues, and the sincere concern for a community that don't just live in the area but drive through the area, the issue escalates quickly. T, the commission's denial was based on sound reasoning, rooted in the city's own standards. And I think the problem was there was too much moral ethical standards in that commission. Uh, holding H and holding to the decision that protects residents from foreseeable harm. E, every change to a neighborhood should be made with those who live there, travel through there in mind first. M, moving forward without fixing the flaws is a, is a dis- uh, disservice to the public. O, our job to make sure that the growth works for the people, not just the developer. Um, U, uniting around the principles of safe, equitable planning is the only responsible choice. And T, that's why because Jorinsky, Sundberg, Kim Shaw do not have the interest
Warning, done.
Of the community. Oh, I was
Done.
Madina, go ahead. You're next.
V, viewing the QuickTrip four two six three site plan through the lens of safety, sustainability, and equity makes it clear why the Planning and Zoning Commission denied it. O, our codes and site planning requirements exist to protect residents, not just to pave the way for quick development. T, the proposed design fails to address traffic patterns, pedestrian safety, and neighborhood compatibility. E, effective site plans should integrate into the community rather than impose risks on it. T, turning over the commission's decision would disregard months of expert analysis and public input. H, history tells us that communities of culture and low-income neighborhoods bear the brunt of poorly planned commercial development. E, enforcement of the planning standards is how you all ensure every neighborhood gets the same level of protection. M, maintaining the denial safeguards that, maintaining the denial safeguards, the quality of life for nearby residents. O, our witness to your integrity as a city rests on whether you hold firm to the standards you claim to exhaust. U, unless this site plan is significantly improved to meet those standards, it should remain denied. That being said, for the business owners on this call, please note and understand that we are here tonight because Jorinsky, Sundberg, and Kasaw have the interest of the community centered and we are spelling both them out. I'm done.
Next, we have Robert. Robert, go ahead.
Eighty and twenty-six fifty South Havana. And the owners support the site plan proposed by QuickTrip. And that support came after evaluating many alternative layouts and, and also involving the neighbors, Epic Mountain Sports and Lenny's Golf and Ski. They reviewed the plans, provided feedback to QuickTrip, and ultimately expressed support for the proposed site plan. And the owners agree, the current orientation as depicted in the site plan is, is the best for this site. It allows for a smooth flow of traffic through the property while minimizing adverse impacts to adjacent businesses. And the adjacent businesses are tenants of ours and are of concern, of course, to us. Most importantly, it enhances the security and lighting on the site, like we discussed before, that there were key factors to determining, to, excuse me, to deter criminal activity and improving overall safety in the area. So for these reasons, the owners respectfully request that you approve QuickTrip's site plan appeal. Thank you.
That was the last speaker.
Very well. Questions of staff or the applicant or appellant? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed and a motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to approve eleven C.
To overturn?
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, overturn, overturn, letting commission?
Very well, move by.
Sorry, Mayor, may I amend that briefly?
Please.
The motion should be overturn the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the QuickTrip four two six three site plan subject to resolution of outstanding technical issues prior to recordation of the site plan and issuance of any building permits.
I was about to say that. Thank you.
Okay. Is that a friendly amendment? Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Very well.
Second, Gardner. Move by.
I'm so, I'm so sorry, Mayor. I, I just want to make sure that we follow the procedure. I don't believe the appellant was given their three minutes to respond.
Yeah, I, I was wanting, if, if they want it, I would just make sure. Yeah.
Okay. Let me reopen the public hearing. And does the appellant wish to give closing remarks?
We appreciate everybody's time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Motion is in order and it was moved by Mayor Protem as amended by the city attorney. And it's seconded by
Gardner.
Seconded by Councilmember Gardner. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, call for the question on the, on Mayor Protem's motion on eleven C.
Katie, I vote yes, Jorinsky.
Thank you. Mayor Kaufman?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Thank you. The motion passes with seven yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Coombs, Medina, and Mario, and one abstained vote from Councilmember Hancock to overturn the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the QuickTrip four two six three site plan subject to resolution of outstanding technical issues prior to the recordation of the site plan and issuance of any building permits.
With the clerk, now please read the title to item number twelve A.
Item twelve A is introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-five seventy-two, eliminating the independent review board.
Bring a presentation by staff.
Mayor, council, this is one of a number of ordinances that are in front of you tonight. Council had had discussions about consolidating or eliminated, eliminating a number of different boards and commissions. This one for twelve A relates to the independent review board. It is essentially a defunct board that has not been utilized and our recommendation from staff is to eliminate it. I'm available for any questions.
Questions of staff? Seeing none, motion is in order?
Air motion to approve twelve A.
I'm sorry, who was that? It was Councilmember Gardner?
Yep.
Moved by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by
Bergen.
Councilmember Bergen to eliminate, to approve item number twelve A. Discussion? Seeing no discussion.
Mayor, we have officials from the public who would like to speak.
Yeah, we have your public comment, Mayor, and all these because this is the introduction of ordinances.
Very well.
First speaker is Ante. Ante, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, Michael. Hi, Michael. I'm back. It's Ante. I am opposing this and according to you, I live in Aurora. Voluntary compliance with the standard of accountability is never enough.
I'm sorry, where, I'm sorry. Sorry, it's not according to me. Where do you live? Are you a resident of the city of Aurora?
Bro, you just interrupted me about this. We're gonna try this again. Hello, Michael and the rest of council. My name is Ante. I am opposing twelve A. And according to Mayor Kaufman, I am a resident of the city of Aurora. As I was saying, voluntary compliance with the standards of accountability is never enough. That's why the independent review board was created. Overturning its existence ignores the lessons learned from the past failures and transparency. The I R B gives residents confidence that investigations are not controlled solely by those being investigated. Eliminating it takes away the layer of fairness that, that this city desperately needs. This ordinance would dismantle one of the most imp- excuse me, one of the most impartial bodies equipped to review incidents of public concern. Honest governance does not fear oversight. It embraces it. Every department and leader benefits from the independent review because it builds credibility. Making this change is not reform, it's regression. Our community fought too hard for accountability to see it stripped away by a single vote. Unite, unite it in rejecting this ordinance and protect the public trust. That is why, I'm not even going to say that last line because I don't need to be cut off. And I'm sure you're going to hear it from the next speaker. Ha, checkmate. See you in the next one.
Next is Hashim. Hashim, go ahead. You have three minutes. Hashim, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hashim, Aurora, thank you. Aurora resident. And I am against this. And I hope that the mayor follows the rules that he has stated for as far as the warning goes. And then far as allowing people to correct from the warning, then cutting off. You guys have an issue with this First Amendment speech stuff. So victims of injustice deserve more than empty promises. They deserve independent oversight that works. One of the strongest tools we have to deliver that oversight is the independent review board. To eliminate it now, at a time when public trust is already strained, is reckless and damaging. Each case the I R B examines helps to ensure no one is above scrutiny. The alternative is showing internal systems to investigate themselves, which history has proven it fails community. Holding on to the I R B means holding on for a measure of transparency that can prevent future harm. Ensuring justice requires that there is always an outside set of eyes on our processes. Moving to dissolve the I R B, well, that removes that safeguard. Our city needs more accountability, not less. City is murdering innocent black men that have no weapons in their hands. Uphold the I R B and show that you stand with the people, not against them. That I feel is a lot to ask. But however, that should not be. If people value life, if people value integrity, if people value respect, if people really valued the voice of the community, they would have no issue with upholding the independent review board. But if someone has something to hide, this is what you do. This is how hierarchical governments operate. This, right here, is not what the people of Aurora want. Sadly, you all might have to become victims of Aurora's responsibility.
Next, we have Madina. Madina, go ahead.
V, voice after voice in this city has called for more transparency, not less, in matters of public accountability. O, our independent review board exists to provide oversight that builds trust between the community and the institutions that serve it. T, taking away this safeguard will erode the fragile trust that has been fought for over years of advocacy. E, entry into reform is not through secrecy, but through sunlight. T, the I R B ensures that critical incidents receive independent evaluation, free from political interference. H, history in Aurora shows what happens when there is no independent body to review controversial actions. Accountability suffers. E, every resident deserves to know that there is an impartial check on power. M, moving to eliminate the I R B sends a clear message that oversight is optional and it should never be. O, our people in the city cannot afford to go backwards on transparency. U, upholding the I R B means upholding the public's right to know. C, transparency is something that this council continues to evade without disruption. Each and every time that is done, your integrity is called into question and your legacy is on the line. There are countless individuals that are paying attention and that are asking plenty of questions as to why a council that has had issues with transparency, oversight, and executing on equity would want to overturn something like the I R B. The independent review board is something that you can no longer evade. And there are opportunities for you to actually surprise those that don't stand behind your leadership and ensure that this is not overturned. But transparency is critical. And as individuals ask questions about the leaders on the city council that represent the city of Aurora, they continue to ask who are the leaders they can stand behind. And my answer is always resoundingly wrote them out. Jorinsky, Sundberg, and Kasaw. I'm done.
Your time is up. That was the last speaker for twelve A.
We'll go again. Now, please read the title to item number twelve B.
Mayor, we need to
Mayor, we still need a vote on A.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, ouch. It was very painful. Okay. Do, we did the presentation by staff. Do we, a motion, a motion is in order?
No, we have a motion in a second.
We already have a second. It is a discussion.
I was just making sure it was on the record that we had it and we're going to move into that now, Mayor.
Okay, but it was moved and seconded, right? No, I don't think it was, was it?
Yes, it was.
Oh, okay. Is there any further discussion? I see not, I'm sorry, who's that?
Coombs.
Councilmember Coombs.
So just in light of the comments, I do want to kind of address why council is moving to remove this board. It is a board that was in place during every single one of the high-profile killing and abuse cases of black people in this city. It is unfortunately not a board that actually prevents, addresses, or provides transparency on those issues. That may have been the intent. We would hope that's the intent, but it's not, it has not functioned in our and it's ended up being a board that doesn't review these cases when they come forward. And so for that reason, I do support removing the board. I wanted to clarify that that's what's going on. And that's why staff brought it forward for a recommendation for eleven issues because it does not
Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve A.
Councilman Jorinsky?
The motion passes with eight yes votes, one no vote from council member Medina, and with council member Jurinsky absent to eliminate the independent review board.
Right now, please read the title to have number twelve B.
Item twelve B is ordinance twenty twenty-five seventy-three, eliminating the Human Relations Commission.
Uh, brief presentation by staff.
Uh, Mayor, Council, this is another board that was raised during, uh, by council during the discussions. Uh, and the direction from council during the study session was to bring it here to see the, if, uh, what the majority will of council was. So I can, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, yes, I have a question, and that is, um, on the Human Relations Commission and the Veterans Commission. Um, if this does pass and they are eliminated, um, by the end of this year, um, could I, is it possible that I could make them, uh, kind of continue them on a formal basis? And, um, you, where there would be no new appointments on it, it would just be basically a, an advisory to the mayor and I would meet with him once a month and any council members who wanted to join me on the Human Relations Commission and the Veterans Commission, and then I would fund it if possible. Uh, and this is my question, with, um, unexpended travel funds.
So Mayor, uh, Pete Sholley, City Attorney, what I would say is, is that, of course, any meeting that you have that has more than two council members, if that, that was what would happen. If another council member joined you, more, two council members joined you, that would be a meeting that would have to be listed. It's not subject to, to ordinance, it would not be appropriate for it to be sanctioned by the city. You obviously, as elected official, could have a group of advisors that you can meet with, and as long as it meets the council rules on, on your funding, um, you could use that to do refreshments, food and so forth. But if these are eliminated, they're, they wouldn't be, in essence, city sponsored.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, let's see, motion is in order. Are, are there any further questions, staff? Uh, seeing no motions, uh, council member, uh, Coombs.
Yes, so City Manager Bachelor, when we had this prior conversation, um, my question was about whether and how we were going to ensure that the kinds of complaints and discussions that are brought forward to the Human Relations Commission still have um, an avenue to be heard, um, and that the information about addressing discrimination still has an avenue to be, uh, provided to the community. So I'm wondering if there was any additional, um, action taken on the staff's side or any additional information can provide on there?
Yeah, the, um, I, I think the city attorney can help me weigh in here, but the, um, uh, Human Relations Commission in, in their work is, uh, entirely advisory to council. If someone wishes to raise those complaints, uh, there are, um, both state and I believe the county, I'm, I'm, this is where Pekin helped me out, but there are legally mandated, um, commissions to, uh, take those complaints and, and, um, um, those will still be available to any residents of Aurora, um, if this commission is eliminated. And Pete, you can correct me if I'm wrong there.
No, no, that is, uh, Pete Sholley, City Attorney, that's correct. Uh, we don't, the city doesn't have any ability under law. Um, they're advisory, they really don't have the independent authority to investigate any of the complaints that come forward, uh, that the county and state level do. On that, I think that's what was the discussion of the study session that Jason stated, um, that we would allow those entities at the county and state level to handle those complaints. And I think what we would do, Jason, perhaps we're wrong, but if we did get a complaint, we would direct those individuals to the appropriate county or state resource.
Mayor, if I may ask a follow-up. Um, yeah, so just, I guess, the other component though is that education piece and that connecting with the community to, um, kind of promote people being able to utilize those other mechanisms. Um, so is there any way that we envision and the education or community support for it?
Um, I, I, I've not developed anything yet. If that's the direction from council, we're happy to work with our communication staff, uh, make folks aware of that, and then, you know, kind of, um, put out education messaging through our, uh, communication staff, if that's the, the direction we get from council.
Further discussion. I see none, a motion is in order.
You're, uh, Mayor, we have speakers, I think, on this one, so.
Oh, very well.
First we have Aaron. Aaron, go ahead. You have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Um, so I understand that you're voting on the person to, that to dissolve the Human Relations Commission. I'm writing with a heavy heart as I realize that a personal social media post that made four years ago may contribute, may be contributing to this conversation. The post shared on my personal page, not the HRC, reflected my own opinion. I commented that two council members seemed out of touch for calling Aurora Mall the town center of Aurora. While both terms are technically correct, my tone was fun and cheap, something many longtime residents of Aurora would recognize. You've all said, or posted things you wish we could have, please have your phrase, that to let a potential grievance from years ago impact the future of the commission doing vital work for our community is troubling. The HRC has partnered with impactful organizations like the Iron Sharp Foundation, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, the National Western Stock Show, Aurora Mental Health, and the N double, NAACP Aurora, among others. Dissolving it could send a long message that Aurora is moving away from its commitment to diversity, inclusion, and equity. I know that isn't true for many of you. I've seen your compaction firsthand, like when Mayor and Councilmember Gardner honored my grandfather to see a few names where his number was retired permanently. In that moment, politics took a backseat to community and disrupt. I respectfully urge you not to let one individual's past post determine the future of a commission that continues to serve Aurora with heart and purpose. Please consider the broader impact of this, this decision in the message it sends. Please, please, for the love of God, reconsider dissolving the HRC. Thank you.
Next is Amy. Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Amy and I'm a longtime Aurora resident, and I oppose removing the HRC. I've had the privilege of serving the community on the Human Relations Commission for many years, most recently as chairperson. I recognize that no words I share today will change some council person's decisions. And I understand that despite the fact that council receives yearly presentations with data, photos, and a compelling case for the work the commission does within the community, personal feelings often trump data and facts. I also understand how influence works. When one dominant voice leads, other on this council tend to follow. So I'll focus my time on what matters most, the work that the HRC has done, and the community we've had the privilege of serving. Over the past years, through my role on the commission, I've witnessed the power of partnership. We've collaborated with nonprofits, shared vital messages, and extended services to our neighbors. I want to thank each organization that welcomed us, worked alongside us, and helped us to reach those in need. Your dedication has made a lasting impact, and I look forward to continuing to partner with you in the future in new ways. To the community, I want to express my deepest gratitude. I'm sorry that if the HRC is removed, we will no longer be able to support initiatives like the Community Reading Event, the Drives for Our Unhoused Veterans and Residents, the Educational Know Your Rights Events, the Holocaust Remembrance Events, Dr. Martin Luther King Day Events, the APD Blue Backpack Initiative, and nor will we be there to volunteer at the city table at National Night Outs, Pride, Santa in the Park, the Summer and Winter Events with Iron Sharp, or continue some of the additional outreach efforts that mean so much. But please know this, support still exists. Even if the HRC is no longer active, many of you have my contact information, and I encourage you to reach out anytime. I will continue to connect you with the resources we have in place and ensure you are supported, your needs addressed, and your voice is heard. To our nonprofit partners, thank you for allowing us to build strong relationships and serve the citizens of Aurora in a meaningful way. To our city partners and the APD community team, your commitment to the community has been unwavering, even through countless changes that have occurred. I appreciate your heart and your service to my fellow residents. Finally, I want to remind the community that while the HRC may not always exist, if you feel your voice has been silenced or your needs not met, whether through ignored emails, refusal to meet, or public dismissals, I encourage you to act. Community has a powerful voice. Use it in November and vote them out. Thank you.
Next is Ante. Ante, go ahead.
Move into hood, Michael. Uh, hey, Ante, opposing, according to you, I live in Aurora. Uh, let's start. Unless you wanna interrupt me, then go ahead and do that now. Speak now forever. Hold peace. Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward with my prepared remarks. Value and diversity and equity means protecting the institutions that uphold them. Our Human Relations Commission is one of the few bodies designed to address discrimination in, in a public and accountable way. The removal of this commission will make it harder for residents to seek redress when harm occurs. Every step towards justice begins with having a place to bring concerns. To dismantle the HRC is to strip away, uh, is to strip the city of its own conscience on issues of human rights. Holding on all, holding on to this body shows that we take seriously the voices of those often most ignored. Every person in Aurora benefits from a city that actively works to resolve bias and inequity. Making this change sends the opposite signal. Only those comfortable with the inequity would support removing this safeguard. Use this vote and stand for human dignity and reject the ordinance. That is why, that is why Aurora, Colorado needs to shift in its stance when it comes to the human right, human rights, uh, commission. Do not remove this commission. And if you do, make sure that you vote out Jurinsky, Sundberg, and Kasaw. Peace.
Done.
Next is Hashim. Hashim, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, Hashim, um, Aurora resident, I'm against this. Um, it's just something that the mayor and I have in common, because we both served on the HRC. Um, so, but the, as envisioning, cities don't cut the very commissions that work to unite their residents. O, our Human Relations Commission is an essential partner in building a safe, inclusive Aurora. T, the problems it addresses, discrimination, cultural misunderstanding, systemic inequities, do not disappear just because the body is dissolved. E, ending it guarantees those problems will grow unchecked. B, this ordinance removes one of the only formal ways residents can bring forward human rights concerns. H, healthy governance listens to feedback, especially from those in marginalized communities. Erasing, E, erasing this body silences that feedback. M, maintaining the HRC is an investment in peace, trust, and community cohesion. O, our responsibility is to strengthen this work, not destroy it. U, unite against the elimination of the HRC for the good of the entire city. T, huh, yeah. T, the T is that this commission, when I was chair, often stepped in to resolve problems of simple misunderstandings, um, between people and business owners so that things weren't escalated, where money wasn't wasted, even if it didn't come out of this government's pockets. Um, but it also, as I stated before, it helped to build community. Um, Amy, who spoke, is awesome. She deserves to be on this board. Um, that's the representation that we don't just need in the HRC, but we need her on city council. So people should remember to vote for her in November for War Two.
Boy.
And that way we will get the representation that we truly need on the.
Next is Madan. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
B, voices from across Aurora have relied on the Human Relations Commission to address bias, discrimination, and inequity in this city. O, our communities need more platforms for dialogue, not fewer. T, taking away the HRC dismantles a critical bridge between residents and leadership. E, eliminating this commission sends the message that human relations work is no longer a priority. T, this ordinance would erase decades of work, creating spaces where systemically impacted residents can be heard. H, history shows that when these bodies are removed and equities deepen and tensions grow. E, empowering the HRC was one of the very few ways Aurora demonstrated its commitment to inclusion. M, moving to dissolve it undermines that commitment entirely. O, our communities cannot thrive without deliberate work on human relations. U, unite in protecting this commission for the sake of every resident's dignity. T, the dismantling of these commissions is not indicative of leadership. If these boards are ineffective, that is not a call to dismantle them. That is a call to reform, realign, and push forward the right way. Each of you has a responsibility to ensure that the community has an entry point to access and inform the decisions that you make. Those decisions are what ensures that trust can be built and sustained as you represent more than yourself in these positions. The mere fact that there is a suggestion that these boards become performative should grapple with everyone. No one wants performative boards where Mayor Mike Kaufman signs up for snack duty. That is not how a Human Relations Commission should exist. It is indicative that there are extreme issues inside of the leadership of this council. And that is why it resonates heavily on my heart to ensure that I stay. Jurinsky, Sundberg, and Kasaw, it's time to vote them out.
Done.
I'm done.
That was the last speaker.
Very well, um, we already did a motion on this.
No.
We need a motion down there.
Okay, very well, um, a motion is in order.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, who's this?
Bergen.
Oh, Bergen, Councilmember Bergen.
Uh, motion to approve twelve B.
Moved by Councilmember Bergen, seconded by.
Hancock.
Seconded by Councilmember Hancock to approve item number twelve B. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, uh, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve B.
Hey, I'm yes, Jurinsky.
Thank you. The motion passes with six yes votes, four no votes from Councilmember Coombs, Lawson, Medina, Mario, to eliminate the Human Relations Commission.
Let's see, now please read the title to item number twelve C.
Item twelve C is ordinance twenty twenty-five seventy-four, eliminate, eliminating the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Uh, brief presentation by staff. Well, I think we felt well familiar with this issue. So, um, motion is in order.
We do have two people who would like to speak on this item.
Very well.
Excuse me. First we have Ante. Ante, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Mr. Michael, back at it again. Uh, uh, Ante, opposition, um, according to your Facebook posts, I live in Aurora. Voices of those who served in uniform bring lived experience that no other advisory body can replace. Our Veterans Affairs Commission provides a direct link between veterans and the services that they need in Aurora. Taking away this commission means taking away that link. Eliminating it sends a harmful message to those who have get, already given so much. The needs of veterans, from housing stability to mental health support, are too important to be hand, hand, handled without their direct input. Holding on to this commission honors both their service and their sacrifice. Every veteran in this city should know that their local government has a space dedicated to them. Maintaining the commission is. Maintaining the commission is the least we can do. Our responsibility is to ensure and to assure veterans' voices are part of the decision-making. Unite against this ordinance and show that Aurora stands with its veterans. That is why the city of Aurora must, and the city council of Aurora must vote against this, uh, resolution. And if they don't, then you need to vote them out. Bye. Get the next one.
Hashim, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Hashim, Aurora resident, and I stand against this. Veterans carry the weight of service long after our military duty ends. Our city's commitment to them should be ongoing, not subject to political convenience. The Veterans Affairs Commission has been a space for advocacy, coordination, and problem solving for those who have served. Ending it abandons that work. This ordinance treats veterans as an afterthought when they should be a priority. Having a commission ensures that the issues don't get lost in the shuffle of broader agendas. Equity and civic engagement means making sure veterans have representation. Moving to dissolve the commission strips them of that representation. Our city should strengthen its support for veterans, not dismantle it. Uphold the commission and the community it serves. That is why I'm asking you all to do what's right. It's a deeper reach for some than it is for others. But I just want to make sure that you understand exactly where I'm coming from on this issue. Veterans carry our, the weight of service long after their military duty ends. Our city's commitment to them should be ongoing, not subject to political convenience. The Veterans Affairs Commission has been a space for advocacy, coordination, and problem solving for those who have served. This ordinance treats veterans as an afterthought when they should be a priority. Having a commission ensures that issues don't get lost in the shuffle of broader agendas. Equity and civic engagement means making sure veterans have representation. Moving to dissolve it, excuse me, moving to dissolve the commission strips them of that representation. Our city's commitment to them should be ongoing, not subject to political convenience. The Veterans Affairs Commission has been a space for advocacy, coordination, and problem solving. Ending it abandons that work.
Your time is up. That was the last speaker. Mayor.
Very well.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Bergen.
Um, and I guess this would be a question for our city attorney. Um, I wanted to make an amendment. I know that they're having a hard time, uh, getting people to serve on the commission, but I was wanting to make an amendment that we don't eliminate the commission, but that we change, kind of like we did with the oil and gas, that we change it to a quarterly meeting instead of a monthly. Maybe we would be able to get more attendance that way, so there's not as much of a commitment. Um, also, obviously, you know, the Veterans Affairs is handled, um, by the state and by the county. So, um, although I think, you know, this, the people that do want to serve on ours, um, you know, maybe for some veteran events and so forth, um, it might be good to keep it, um, and just, just limit the, the meeting time so it reduces staff, um, time as well. So would, would we need to vote to eliminate it, then bring it back? Or, or can we do it today? With.
Um, uh, Councilmember Bergen, Andrea, are you on? I, again, I haven't, I didn't dive into these ordinance as much as you have regarding these. Is this, is it, is it timing in, in the ordinance?
It is not.
Yeah, that's what I thought. If you want to handle it like you did, as I say, yeah, simply if you guys just vote no on this or, or table it and just give us the direction you want to meet quarterly like you did with, uh, the oil and gas. That's what we will make happen, uh, with the oil and gas commission. They just updated their bylaws to reflect that guidance from council and, um, that's the way we're proceeding.
Okay, so vote no to, to vote no about eliminating it, then bring back a change.
Well, you wouldn't have to. You would just direct staff and I, if you guys gave them direction that, hey, we only want them to meet quarterly if you guys, so you can make that part of the motion to, to direct staff. But I would, again, I would, if you guys are going to not, well, somebody needs to make a motion to approve and then it would fail and then the ordinance would fail. And with an idea that, that, that staff is getting the, the recommendation to, to meet quarterly for that commission.
And if there is no motion, it fails automatically.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Let me, um, let me just say I met with them, uh, their last monthly meeting. And I think the, um, and I had an offer to them, you know, using, um, monies from my account, uh, for office account to be able to support them and to work on a project. And, and part of the problem is they just haven't had direction in terms of projects. And, um, so a project that we mentioned that they're kind of excited about is, um, uh, doing a reception at the end of the school year for all those, uh, young people that'll be going into the military and, and making for them and for their families and really recognize them. And they're excited about that, that particular project. But that's going to take meeting really on a monthly basis. Um, I'm willing to, to utilize my own unexpendated funds, uh, to support that. But, but that's doing away, that's doing away with it to get the savings. I think if you go to quarterly meetings, then I could be able, uh, that, in terms of, it's going to be very hard for them to effectively do anything.
Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, if we, sorry, yes, if we went to quarterly meetings, they could, they could, um, on their own, have subcommittees and meet as they, as they wish.
Well, what, what would be the savings? Uh, what do we know?
No staff time on subcommittees? I guess, I don't know.
No, um, well, I'm willing to support them. Um, so I'm not sure what we get, um, by, if you're going to formally recognize it, we're going to have to have some staff support. So I, I would go with that. I would vote for it as it is. And, um, they can, you know, they can just volun, they can volunteer and all assist them. But okay, uh, a motion is in order. Is it, uh, I'm sorry, um, Councilmember Mario.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I was just going to voice my support for, uh, Councilmember Bergen's, uh, suggestion. There's a cost savings by reducing the amount of meetings just right off the bat. Um, you know, it's not a complete cost savings, but we don't just do things to save money. Um, there's a, there's a deeper purpose to the work that we're doing. Um, so I, I'm not opposed to, um, reducing the amount of work and, you know, three months in between each meeting does give the, uh, commission time to move work that they might want to, to, to move. Um, it's hard to see progress from month to month, so having a quarterly meeting, I think, could be a really good middle ground. So I, I support the proposal.
Further discussion? Um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bergen, why don't you move your proposal?
Uh, can I move it before a motion on the existing, uh, city attorney?
Uh, Pete, can she amend the, oh, I, that's right, I'm, it, the, this is, well.
Yeah, because.
We didn't have a motion yet. We had talked about it, but it, there wasn't an actual motion that seconded, so, um.
So if my understanding is correct, someone has to make a motion in a second and then it, and then if it, or no motion means it fails. And then I can offer the quarterly?
You, what you, you would do at that point is you would ask council, because this is on the agenda, you would, you would make a motion, you know, that saying, hey, because that just failed and we're going to keep the commission, I propose that we direct staff to have them meet quarterly. And then that, then you guys would vote on that. So the first thing is either it fails without a motion on the actual agenda item, or there's a motion made to approve it and it fails.
So you want a yes vote, right, or? Councilmember Bergen, what do you, what is Councilmember Bergen, what do you?
I would suggest a no vote on eliminating it and then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I, can I just offer something? Can, can Councilmember Bergen offer a substitute motion? Like if I moved to, or somebody moved to vote on this thing, uh, and then she offers the substitute motion, and then that way it's, it's taken care of that way?
So because it's, because the, the, the additional motion that Councilmember Bergen is talking about is not on the agenda, uh, we need to vote on the agenda item as it is. So the appropriate motion at this point would be, I move to approve item eleven or twelve C. And then after that, if it doesn't pass, then there can be an additional motion to give staff direction, just so it's the will of the body.
But she, she couldn't then, like in any other motion, offer a substitute motion?
Well, the substitute.
Once the original motion is taken?
So once you do the original motion, you do a substitute motion, it would replace the original motion and you still.
Exactly.
Motion is in order.
All right, go for it, Councilmember Bergen, if you figure that out.
It sounds like someone has to make a motion to eliminate it or no one makes a motion and it fails.
Mayor, motion to approve twelve C.
Uh, move by Councilmember Gardner, second by.
Coombs.
Councilmember Coombs, uh, to approve item number, uh, twelve C. Um, Councilmember Bergen.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second and now I would, um, I would ask my colleagues to vote no on it.
Very well, um, a substitute motion, uh, by Councilmember Bergen, is not a substitute, what is it?
It's a very good motion. So the motion before the course, are you asking for any more discussion? If not, we'll call for the question on the, on the motion to approve.
Councilmember Gardner, just move to, um, to a limit.
Right, we had.
Yep.
Now we both know for it, or yes.
So, yeah, so we got a motion to approve twelve C. If you all vote no, we will keep the Veterans Commission.
Okay. Um, uh, discussion? A call for the question on the Gardner motion, uh, on item number twelve C.
Katie, I'm a no, Dransky.
So, no.
The motion does not pass with nine no votes and one yes vote from Councilmember Gardner.
So now, before we go into the next item, uh, Mayor, if Councilmember Bergen was to bring another motion related to this, this would be the time.
Should we do it now or not, uh, even though it doesn't fit under the, under the title?
It would be right now because we're still on the Veterans Affairs item because we haven't moved to twelve D yet. So if you want to make your motion, uh, Councilmember Bergen, get a second item and get the will of the, the body.
Yes, I'd like to do that, please.
Um, Councilmember Bergen.
Okay, I make a motion that the Veterans Affairs, that we direct staff to have the Veterans Affairs Commission meet on a quarterly basis. Second.
Remove by, um, Councilmember Bergen, second by Councilmember Hancock, uh, to move the meetings to a quarterly basis. Discussion? Uh, say no discussion, uh, call for the question on the Bergen motion.
Katie, I'm a no, Dransky.
No, Cassa.
The motion passes with seven yes votes, three no votes from Councilmember Gardner, Dransky, and Kasaw.
Very well. Um, we're, uh, now please read the title to item number eleven, uh, twelve D.
D is ordinance twenty twenty-five seventy-five, eliminating the youth commission.
Um, brief presentation by staff.
Mayor, this is a, yeah, Mayor, this is an item, um, that, uh, Councilmember Bergen, we worked with her to bring forward. So this item would eliminate the youth commission. However, items, uh, twelve E, uh, the consolidation of the parks, um, boards, twelve F, the consolidation of the, um, cultural services commissions, and then, uh, the, uh, twelve G, the Aurora, the amendment to the Aurora Immigrant and Refugee Commission, and then the library board, twelve H. Um, those, all those items, um, include expanding those board admission to include youth representation on those boards. Um, and so, uh, those are sort of companion to that. And I can, uh, turn it over now to Councilmember Bergen, um, to catch anything that I've missed.
Mayor.
And Mayor, we have individuals who would like to speak on this item too.
He wants your word. Do I go right to?
Can I just give my statement since I'm sponsoring it?
Please.
Um, yes, as, um, our city manager just, um, alluded to, um, we have a hard time again with attendance with this particular commission. And I felt it would be good to have, um, them experience more some of the other, uh, boards where they could give in, uh, their input, where they would actually gain experience and learn, uh, more about those different functions. And so, um, it's, it's just a way to engage the youth more.
I don't know how we're going to cut the, cut this hole down, this budgetary, uh, problem. Um. Yeah, Councilmember Bergen.
Yeah, it, it eliminates the youth commission, so that means staff won't have to, um, to meet monthly for this commission. It's, but it does allow youth to participate on twelve EF, twelve G, and twelve H boards. It just gives them, it gives them a, um, spot on those boards.
Yeah, well, well, but as we all know, there's administrative costs to doing that, so there is a burden to the city.
There's no additional administrative cost. They're just one of different members on the other boards that we're not eliminating.
I'm not even going to go.
Okay.
Katie, go ahead.
First, we have Hashim. Hashim, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Um, what is it? Hashim, um, Aurora resident. And I am against this. Um, visionary cities, uh, create international spaces for youth, voices to thrive. O, our city, excuse me, our youth commission has been that space, fostering leadership and community connections. E, the plan to eliminate it undermines years of investment in youth empowerment. E, experience shows that youth thrive when they have ownership, not just participation. E, the commission lets young people set their own agendas and speak with collaborative strengths. H, hand taking a few youth for other boards won't replace that. E, everyone in Aurora benefits when young leaders are given a chance to lead. M, moving them to other commissions risks sidelining their priorities entirely. O, our youth deserve a platform that is theirs, not borrowed. U, unite to protect their rights to speak as one voice. T, there is something that is interesting. As the complaint is, we're having a hard time filling these boards. Well, maybe, maybe it's because leadership is rotten at the top. And that the representation of the city is just not something that gives anyone pride that they want to be associated with. So that's something that should be considered. When we talk about cost savings, I mean, there was action planned by this council to, to limit what the city of Aurora could do for employee taxes or for businesses that are coming in, uh, with employees. But yet we've heard tonight on how businesses fast track. But it seems as if certain council members are, are cutting off the air supply to growth and to development for Aurora to actually be the city that it claims to be. And it's not missed on me or anyone that the chaos, the inattitude to be able to run an efficient meeting is embarrassing. If the amount of time was spent into learning Robert rules of orders and how to pray. If the amount of time was spent into learning Robert rules of orders and how to prepare, prepare a correct motion as it is to try to suppress free speech.
Your time is up.
Might not be the last.
Next is Ante, Ante, go ahead.
Ante, opposed, according to, uh, Mike, I live in Aurora. Valuing youth means valuing their collective power, not scattering it across unrelated boards. Our youth commission allows them to identify priorities together, creating a shared vision for the city. Taking away that shared space diminishes their ability to drive meaningful change. Every strong democracy invests in its next generation of leaders. The proposal before you treats youth involvement as a box, box to check rather than a voice to empower. Having one or two youth on seats on other boards will not replace the leadership pipeline the commission provides. Engaging civic engagement early ensures a stronger and more inclusive Aurora in the future. Making this cut weakens that future. Our young people deserve more than symbolic inclusion. Use your vote to preserve their commission. That is why, because of these council members that don't have the interest of the community centered, you must vote them out. I'm done. I've already.
Medina, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Me, voices of young people are not just the future of Aurora, they are part of its present. Oh, our youth commission has given them the authority, or excuse me, the autonomy to speak as a unified body on issues that impact their lives. T, to replace that with scattered representation on other boards is to dilute their voice, not strengthen it. E, en- engagement works best when those affected have their own space to lead. T, the youth commission has been a training ground for civic leadership and public service. H, history shows that when young people are brought in as afterthoughts rather than as leaders, participation suffers. E, every decision about youth should be made with youth, not just with one token seat at another table. M, moving to dissolve the commission sends the opposite message. O, our youth and our community should be expanding youth leadership, not dismantling it. U, uphold the youth commission and protect the platform it provides. T, the mere fact that this commission, along with all of the others, are on the chopping block is signaling that there is something bigger going on in the city of Aurora. I wonder if it's a financial issue causing these commissions to be on the chopping block. And if that is the case, then this is a very irresponsible way to try to mitigate problems that are coming from other entry points. The youth of the city of Aurora, at some point, will be a constituency that you will have to look at and look for in your voter turnout. So to dismantle a commission that offers them an entry point to be a voice is irresponsible. The dismantling of this commission only to spread out their seats and their opportunities is not only performative, it is pathetic. And that behavior has been something that has been evident for quite some time, and we see it in the leadership. This November is important to vote Jurenski, Sundberg and Kasaw.
Morning.
I'm done.
That was the last speaker.
Okay, um. So, um. Did we do a motion?
Put your motion out there.
Okay, um.
Mayor, could I speak on this?
Yeah, after there's a motion, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Bergen.
Motion to approve twelve D.
Um, it's removed by, um, Councilmember Bergen, second by.
Hancock.
Second by Councilmember Hancock to approve item number twelve D. Uh, discussion, uh, Councilmember Medina.
Thank you, sir. So a couple of things, yeah, I'm certainly opposed to this, partly because a lot of reasons. Again, the voices of youth are gonna be silenced again. The issues that we have with youth currently in our community is gonna be even more exacerbated, I think, because it's, we're telling them, we really don't care about you. The commissions that we're trying to push them into, those meetings will be attended by zero, I would, I would assume. Because Arts meets on Wednesdays at six P M. Aurora immigrant refugee meets one to three o'clock at, on a Tuesday. Library meets one to three on a Tuesday. Parks and Rec meets Wednesday on a five P M. So I would venture to bet that they're probably not gonna do some of those, because if they're doing other activities, uh, in school where we want them to be, they're probably not gonna participate in any of those. And one of them, even two of them, are probably not gonna be superseded by a group of all adults. Basically taking over a meeting, they're gonna have no voice, they're not gonna interject. And so, for those reasons, I, I just feel really bad and sad, and having been part of the youth commission when I worked for the city, is that we have to give them direction. I think there are solutions to this that I've seen work. Boulder has a really great, robust, uh, youth commission. The way they do their meetings to help save cost is they have them at a school. They do them on Fridays in school. That way it eliminates them having to come out later in the day, they're already in school anyway. And then they can have those meetings in a particular school. And I think we can support however we can on that end, and it's a joint collaboration between us and the school system, so. That's just something that I want to throw out and, you know, offer, but, uh, it, it does work, I, I've seen them work, and I think it's a great opportunity. So thank you.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes, um, I appreciate, um, that feedback from, uh, Councilmember Medina. I wish you would have reached out to me with that recommendation before I put this forth, because it's been, you know, it was discussed at study session as well. Um. It, I guess, well, you know, I'm, I'm open, I, I'm willing, I hope to hear from my other colleagues on, on their thoughts on this.
Further discussion.
Mayor.
Um, Councilmember Lawson.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilmember Medina. First of all, some of these commissions that we're putting them on, I mean, youth probably might have some insight, but they're probably, it's not gonna really the things that they need to address. And I think maybe just doing a redesign and putting this maybe in a school place instead of maybe having at the city would be the best thing, but I don't think, after I kind of looked at some of these commissions, I mean, the adults are gonna out, outweigh them. Um, because we know how sometimes these commissions and their voices, to me, is not gonna be heard. Or is it gonna really tackle a lot of the issues that they maybe want to address and bring forth to the council? Um, especially with things that, you know, I haven't even heard from the commission on even an advisory. So whoever is actually doing these meetings, what advisory report have we received? Um, I know we can go to the meetings, but I just think it just needs to be a redesign. And maybe, and Councilmember Medina has something there, maybe putting it into the schools, that would be really, really helpful. And then maybe getting something from the commission to the council on things that are really address their issues. And, and they are gonna be the future leaders, so what are some of the things that they can bring forth to the council to make things that we need to maybe think about? So, um, I would agree with Councilmember Medina on this, and I'm gonna support it staying until we come up with maybe another resolution. And maybe Councilmember Medina can do his proposal, so, thank you, mayor.
Um. Councilmember Hancock.
Well, to Councilmember Bergen's point, you know, I mean, we did talk about this as study session, and there wasn't a whole lot of vigorous support for it. But secondly, um, you know, I, I do think it's important for youth to have the opportunity to, um, be in leadership roles, but it's also important for them to, like, participate. We have a hard time getting these young people to participate in things. And then, uh, to Councilmember Lawson's point, I, I haven't seen a single report as to what these guys do, what their accomplishments have been, and, and perhaps, you know, this could be the opportunity for some redirection, repurposing, rebranding. I, I think it, it, we can have the opportunity for young people to take on leadership roles to prepare them for future endeavors should they want to go into public service. Um, but, uh, it can't continue to be the way it is now. It's, this gotta be something more robust, to your point, Councilmember Medina. So, uh, would you be willing to spearhead that effort?
Yes, I'm, I'm open to gather that information that I've gotten from my connections in Boulder and, and get some framework so I can present that at a later date.
Councilmember Bergen.
Um, it sounds like maybe I should just withdraw. Uh. My, my, uh, importance, if we're gonna work on something else.
Well.
You want to table it?
Let's, yeah.
What you can do, uh, I think is go ahead and vote for this and do away with it, and then, and then, uh, Councilmember Medina can come back with another proposal, uh, restructure it, come back with something different that's more effective than what we have.
I, I'll just withdraw.
Okay, um. Well.
Mayor.
Councilmember Coombs.
So, if that's the case, um, then it seems like we should table twelve D E F G, um, because the others are related to this. Um, so is that an option? Can we table those four and then, um, Councilmember Medina and folk, and Councilmember Bergen can work together and come back with something?
I would say G is definitely, yeah, let me give you a quick up, G is definitely that. I think, um, I can look to some other staff on that one, but I think G is, that's the primary amendment on G. Obviously, E N F are the consolidation of those boards. We could amend, um, those just to strike the portion about the, the youth commission on E N F, and we can get you some, um, language on those if council still wished to E N F, the, the, again, the adding the youth member to those was, um, was not the main portion of that. Obviously, the consolidation of those three boards in each of those cases is the main portion of that for E N F. And then H, um, does have some additional things, Ginger's online, Ginger can provide some additional comments in terms of, uh, some of the other changes that we were looking on the library board, uh, for that one, but I guess it's, it's the, it's the will of the body in terms of how they want to handle those.
And, and mayor, if I may, um, so if, one of the options that we have is to take twelve D through twelve H and take these comments into place and just move them to a meeting, you know, in the future, whether it's a month out, two months out, however you guys want to do it. Um, or as Jason said, we could go through and hear all of them and try to do amendments on the fly, but I think it's more, again, I know it's late, but I know it, it's probably more efficient to, to, to move these out, uh, you know, to a meeting, maybe middle, middle of September or the end of September or beginning of October, that's the will of the body. Uh, as Jason said, but that would be my, my suggestion is let's, let's continue in twelve B through twelve H.
I don't think these are time sensitive right now. Uh, so you're saying table these for another meeting?
Yeah, I would not table, I would continue them so they know they're gonna apply back on, uh, on a, on a meeting again.
Okay.
And, and then we can get some direction from council on all of these, that way we're not doing amendments on, you know, on the fly, on the floor, uh, for all these ordinances.
Very well, okay, so, um, is there a motion, uh, is, um, I'm just gonna say a motion is in order to table item number twelve D through twelve H.
Well, I'm withdrawing, I'm withdrawing twelve D.
Oh.
Okay, so we don't want to have a version of twelve D just come back? It doesn't have to be the same thing. We just say we'll continue twelve D through H.
Why don't we just, yeah, table it, um, is there a motion?
Mayor.
Let me get the date.
Mayor, I'm trying to make a motion.
To make a motion.
Okay, um, I understand you want to withdraw D, so I won't include it. Um, well, but I guess we're on D, so I guess let's let Councilmember Bergen address D, and then I'll make the motion on the other items.
Thank you.
That's my own bargain.
Okay, yeah, I'm in agreement on the others, to continue the others, I want to withdraw twelve D. It, we're not eliminating the youth commission, so it needs to just go away.
So, because.
I just need to withdraw it.
Uh, well, I, yeah, it's on the agenda, so either, e- either it fails with no motion, or we have to vote on it to, to deny it. So I would say nobody make a motion on it, it'll die, or if it's gonna come back in another form, because it's on the agenda, we have to take action.
Okay, so I would suggest that no motion is made on it.
But, that would effectively deny it, as you know, and so.
So, so mayor, if you can, yeah, so if the mayor would ask for the vote, and please, nobody make a motion, or the mayor asked for a motion and no one make a motion.
Okay, uh, motion is in order for item number twelve D. Seeing none, uh, item twelve D is lost. Um, motion is in order for item number twelve E through twelve H.
And you could do those all in one without presentation, because we know we're gonna continue until today, certain, the meeting dates, uh, Councilmember Coombs is September, are the eighth and the twenty-second.
So let's say the twenty-second, we'll continue items E through H to September twenty-second.
Very well, um, to, um, Councilmember Coombs, second by.
Mayor, I second.
Kasa.
Okay, well, uh, Councilmember Hancock is next, okay, uh, second by Councilmember Hancock, discussion? Seeing no discussion, uh, call for the question on the motion to table item number twelve E through twelve H, until, uh, continue until, was it September twenty-second, is that the date?
Yep, the mayor, the meeting on September twenty-second.
Very well, um, discussion? Uh, seeing no discussion, uh, call for the question on the, on the Coombs, uh, motion to table item number twelve E through twelve H.
Katie, I'm a yes.
Thank you, Jurenski.
Yes.
Mayor.
Mayor, cheers.
I yes.
Councilmember Kasaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Gardner. The motion passes with ten yes votes and one absent vote from Councilmember Gardner to continue items twelve E through twelve H to September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five council meeting.
Well, good, now, uh, please read the title to item number twelve I.
Item twelve I is adding and amending provisions of the city code related to the Business Advisory Board, ordinance twenty twenty-five eighty.
Great presentation, White Staff.
Um, mayor, this, um, amendment, um, makes, uh, the B A B, uh, terms con- Pete, you're gonna have to help me with this, con, concomitant with concurrent, it's, it's, I think, yeah, the term actually written, and there's concomitant, I think is what they use, but essentially, uh, it essentially makes the B A B like the Citizens Advisory Budget Committee. So currently, um, the way it's written, the B A B gets three-year terms, but the B A B and the C A B C are the only two boards where you all make direct appointments. And so as a practical matter, you all appoint and remove your committee members to both the B A B and the C A B, and this formalizes that so that there's not this question about them having a three-year term. Uh, essentially, uh, they serve at your pleasure since each of you are appointing members to that board directly. And so this clarifies that and updates that. Katie, did I miss anything?
Yep, that's correct, it just makes sure that the appointee, the council member's appointee is ser- serving the same term the council member is. So four years instead of three years as it is right now.
Questions to staff? Seeing and, uh, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve I. Oh, I'm sorry, a motion is in order.
I think we have people wanting to speak too, is that correct, Katie?
That's correct.
Okay.
First we have Hashim, go ahead.
Hi, Hashim, Aurora resident. I'm not quite sure where I stand yet on this, um, I'm against it probably. Uh, so divisions of Aurora's, uh, economy must come from those who live and work here, not just those who profit here. Our Business Advisory Board will be a place where innovation from the ground up is valued as much as top-down strategy. The proposed changes to membership and provisions must keep that balance intact. Ensuring community-rooted business have a seat at the table is essential. Too often, advisory boards become echo chambers for those. Too often, advisory boards become echo chambers for those well-connected. Having clear guidelines for diverse representations prevents that from happening. Each seat on the board should be a commitment to lifting up the entire business ecosystem. Moving away from this, risk alienating the very entrepreneurs who make Aurora unique. Our city's future depends on equitable economic policy. Use the ordinance to ensure the board serves as a true cross-section of our business community. This is really important, so I'll repeat it. The vision of Aurora's economic economy must come from those who live and work here, not just those who profit here. Our board advisory uh excuse me, our Business Advisory Board should be a place where innovation from the ground up is valued as much as the top-down strategy. The proposed changes for membership and provisions must keep that balance intact, ensuring community-rooted business have a seat at the table is essential. Too often, advisory boards echo become echo chambers for those already well-connected. And having clear guidelines for diverse representation prevents that from happening. Each seat on the board should be a commitment to lifting up the entire business ecosystem. Moving away from this, risk alienating the very entrepreneurs that make Aurora great. Our city's future depends on equitable economic policy. Use this ordinance to ensure the board serves as a true cross-section of our business community. That is why, because Jurenski, Sundberg, and Kasaw do not have the interest of the community centered, and we need to break them out. Remember that. Vote them out and Kaufman is in that.
Your time is up. Dan, go ahead. You have three minutes.
V, voices from across Aurora's business landscape, from small startups to family-run shops deserve equal weight on the Business Advisory Board. O, our economy thrives when its advisory bodies reflect the diversity of who actually does business in the city. C, the proposed changes must be designed to strengthen that representation, not concentrate influence among the already influential. E, every appointment should bring a perspective rooted in real community engagement. T, the Business Advisory Board should be a space where all sectors have a voice, not just those with the deepest pockets. H, holding true to this principle means guarding against political stacking or corporate dominance. E, ensuring seats for minority, immigrant, and women-owned businesses must be a priority. M, membership without that equity will fail to serve the whole city. O, our business community is strongest when it reflects the community itself. U, use these amendments to keep the board accountable to every claim everyone it claims to represent. T, this is so important, I'm gonna repeat it. V, voices from across Aurora's business landscape, from small startups to family-run shops deserve equal weight on the Business Advisory Board. O, our economy thrives when its advisory bodies reflect the diversity of who actually does business in the city. T, the proposed changes must be designed to strengthen that representation and not concentrate influence among the already influential. E, every appointment should bring a perspective rooted in real community engagement. T, the Business Advisory Board should be a space where all sectors have a voice, not just those with the deepest pockets. H, holding true to this principle means guarding against political stacking or corporate dominance. E, ensuring seats for minority, immigrant, and women-owned businesses must be a priority. M, membership without that equity will fail to serve the whole city. O, our business community is strongest when it reflects the community itself. U, use these amendments to keep the board accountable to everyone it claims to represent. C, this type of leadership is the leadership that we need to see in the Aurora City Council, and the leaders are supposed to serve the community, not themselves. So with that being said, it is important that I reflect and let you know that it resonates me with me that the leadership needs to be accountable. And because accountability is an issue for some Jurenski, Sundberg, and Kasaw need to be voted out. I'm done.
Ante, go ahead.
Yep, uh hey, Ante, opposing. Michael says I live in Aurora, so it is what it is. Uh valuing a healthy business uh environment means valuing all voices, not just the loudest. Our Business Advisory Boards must reflect both established corporate uh established corporations and the small and local businesses that keep Aurora's neighborhoods vibrant. The proposed ordinance changes must protect that balance. Every decision this board makes can uh tip the scales towards equity or towards exclusion. To truly advise, the city, the board must include those who know the challenges of navigating permits, financing, and growth without corporate resources. Honoring our diverse business base means making sure all all groups have representation. Economic growth without equity is not progress, it's privilege. Members should intentionally uh be intentionally inclusive and not coincidence coincidentally diverse. Our bu- city businesses, our city's business policy should be shaped by variety variety of lived experience experiences. Uphold that principle in these amendments. That is why Aurora City Council must vote against this, and if they don't they need to vote the council members out. I'm done. No more.
That was the last speaker for twelve I.
Okay. Did we, did I get a motion on twelve I? I don't think so. Uh motion is in order uh on item number twelve I.
Mayor motion to approve item twelve I, Jurenski.
Move by Councilmember Jurenski, second by.
Bergen.
Mayor, second.
Second by Councilmember Bergen to approve item number twelve I, discussion. I see no discussion, call for the question on the adoption of item number twelve I.
Katie, I'm a yes.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Hancock.
Katie, I'm a yes. I got kicked out of Escrib.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes unanimously to adopt item twelve I.
Or not pleased with the title, item number twelve J.
Item twelve J is ordinance twenty twenty five eighty-one, amending chapter thirty-four, article four of the city code to update the purpose and function of the Arts in Public Places program.
A brief presentation.
Mayor, um uh a motion to move this to the September twenty-second meeting would be in order. This is related to the consolidation of the Arts in Public Places Board uh in along with the other Cultural Services Board, so it should be taken up along with those on the twenty-second.
Motion is in order.
Mayor, motion to move this item uh to the next council meeting.
Who is that? I'm sorry.
Jurenski. Jurenski.
Okay, it's moved by
September twenty-second.
September twenty-second.
September twenty-second.
To continue to September twenty-second. Um it's been moved by Councilmember Jurenski, second by.
Coombs.
Councilmember Coombs, uh to continue item number twelve A, J to, is it um August twenty-second?
September twenty-second.
September twenty-second. Um discussion? I see none, call for the question on the adoption of item number uh uh on the Coombs motion to item number twelve J. Um no.
Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Jurenski motion to item number twelve J.
And Katie, I'm a yes, Jurenski.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Hancock.
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Lawson.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously to continue item twelve J to the September twenty-second city council meeting.
Right now, please read the title to item number fourteen A.
Item fourteen A is ordinance twenty twenty-five eighty-two, annexing a parcel of land located in the southeast quarter in the east half of the southwest quarter of section ten, township three south, range sixty-five west of the sixth principal Meridian County of Adams, state of Colorado, Sandy Point Annexation, two hundred and forty-two, one fifty-four acres.
Brief presentation, White Staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Justin Andrews, project manager with the Office of Development Assistance. A petition for annexation was filed with the city clerk for annexation of a two hundred and forty-two acre parcel owned by Cali Management LLC. This parcel is located at the northwest corner of East Fifty-Sixth Avenue and North Hayes Mount Road. Uh council made a finding of substantial compliance regarding this annexation on June ninth of this year. And the first reading for this annexation ordinance was held on July twenty-eighth. The annexation process follows Colorado state law. Tonight's meeting is consideration of the final reading of the annexation and consideration of the annexation agreement for approval. Fourteen A is the annexation ordinance and fourteen B will be the annexation agreement.
Um questions to staff? Uh seeing none, uh motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to approve fourteen A.
Move by uh Mayor Porchem, second by.
Yes, sir.
Second by Councilmember Cassandra, approve item number fourteen A. Discussion? I see no discussion, call for the call for the great. Oh, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue?
Yes.
Okay.
K- K- Ante, go ahead.
Mayor Kaufman and City Council of Aurora. I want to ensure that the voices from across Aurora deserve to be a part of the conversation. When the city's boundaries expand by more than two hundred and forty acres, our responsibility in any annexation is to ensure growth, that growth benefits existing residents as much as it benefits new development. The Sandy Point Annexation must include a clear plan for infrastructure, public services, and environmental stewardship. Expansion without equitable planning often leads to overburdened services. This, uh excuse me. Expansion without equitable planning often leads to overburdened services and deep disparities. This is not just a land transaction. It is a decision that will shape housing, transportation, and community resources for decades. Honoring the public uh means providing transparent details about how this annexation will integrate into Aurora's existing neighborhoods. And I'm gonna just end with this. Is our city can only grow responsibly if our expansion is matched by investment and community needs. Use your vote to ensure that this annexation is done with fairness, foresight, and transparency. Here is your, the the work we do is always centered around the community we serve. And because of that, we are announcing that we will be gifting uh the Aurora City Council its chambers back. For now, and we are doing this on our terms, not yours. We'll see you in the future.
Next is Hashim. Hashim, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh voices from across Aurora deserve to be part of the conversation when the city's boundaries expand more than two hundred and forty acres. Our responsibility in annexation is to ensure that growth benefits existing residents as much as it benefits new development. The Sandy Point Annexation must include a clear plan for infrastructure, public service, and environmental stewardship. Expansion without equitable planning leads to overburdened services and deepened disparities. This is not just a land transaction. It's a decision that will shape housing, transportation, and community resources for decades. Honoring the public means providing transparent details about how this annexation will integrate into Aurora's existing neighborhoods. Equity must guide every part of the plan, from zoning to public amenities to environmental impact assessments. Making annexation decisions without robust community engagement undermines the trust in the process. Our city grow, uh excuse me, our city can grow responsibly only if expansion is matched by investment in community needs. Use your vote to ensure this annexation is done right with fairness and foresight and transparency. The work we do is always centered around community and the people we serve. Because of that, we are announcing that we will be gifting the Aurora City Council their chambers back for now, and we are doing this on our terms.
Morning. Done.
The Dan, you're next. Go ahead.
V, visionary annexation planning must begin with the community, not just the developer's proposal. O, our residents have the right to know how Sandy Point's two hundred and forty-two acres will integrate into Aurora's housing, transportation, and environmental systems. T, the annexation must include safeguards for green space, wildlife, habitat, and sustainable building practices. E, environmental reviews should be public and thorough before final approval. T, this land is part of a larger story. How Aurora chooses to grow in the face of climate change, population growth, and infrastructure limits. H, holding a public process that invests honest feedback is how we avoid costly mistakes down the road. E, every annexation should reflect our values of equity, sustainability, and transparency. M, merely adding acreage without addressing these issues risks creating disconnected, inequitable development. O, our advocacy has always been about equity in every public forum. U, under the guidance of the people we serve, we are shifting our work to the election ahead, yielding our presence here for now, but not our watchfulness. T, the work we do is always centered around the community. Because of that, we are announcing that we will be gifting the Aurora City Chambers back for now, and we are doing this on our terms, not yours.
That was the last speaker.
Okay. Um I think, brief presentation, White Staff. We already did that, right?
We have we have a motion ready to go.
Okay, um discussion? I see no discussion, uh call for the question on the adoption of item number fourteen A.
Say yes, Saunders.
Okay, Councilmember Jurenski. Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Coombs.
Yes.
The motion passes with eight yes votes to absent Councilmember Gardner and Jurenski to approve item fourteen A.
There now, well, please read the title to item number fourteen B. Sandy Point Annexation Agreement, do you have to read that?
I think you did a good job. That's
Hey. Okay, um I think uh there's no additional information, Greg, from staff on this.
Um it's very brief. Um this is just the annexation agreement, which guides underlying property responsibilities with the annexation. Uh the annexation agreement is compliant with city's model and it and as mentioned previously, um there are some additional terms included to address sanitary sewer service, which is not anticipated to be available in the immediate future, but staff from Aurora Water has reviewed and agreed with these additional provisions, and that's it.
Questions to staff? I see now a motion is in order.
Mayor, I move to approve fourteen B.
Move by um Mayor Porchem, second by.
That's us.
Second by Councilmember Kasaw. Um discussion? I see no discussion, call for the adoption of item number fourteen B.
Mayor Kaufman.
Mayor, yes.
Councilmember Jurenski. Councilmember Jurenski. Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Kasaw.
Yes.
The motion passes with nine yes votes. The motion passes with nine yes votes, with two absent from Gardner and Jurenski, to approve item fourteen B.
Oh, Mayor has no report, Councilmember Coombs? Reports?
No report.
Councilmember Gardner? No report, Councilmember Jurenski? No report, Councilmember Kasaw?
No report.
Councilmember Mario?
No report.
Councilmember, Mayor Portem Sundberg?
No report.
Um, Councilmember Medina?
Good, I have a report. So I toured the Aurora Mental Health with Councilmember, uh, geez, I already forgot now, Bergen. We're at the, uh, Recovery Pavilion and, uh, acute care center.
Oh.
Also, my town hall is tomorrow at six thirty-eight at Central Library. And we're gonna be talking about, APD's gonna be talking about senior scams, and then I also went to Saturday to the Sand Creek Regional Greenway's twenty-fifth anniversary, and that was a great event, so that's what my report is, thank you.
Um, Councilmember Hancock?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I wanted to, um, highlight that you and I had the privilege of being present at the raising of the flag during the Purple Heart Commemoration via W Post thirty-six thirty-one, um, for Purple Heart recipients from various combat theaters. The Purple Heart, originally known as the Badge of Military Merit, was first established on August seventh, seventeen eighty-two by General George Washington to recognize soldiers for meritorious service during the Revolutionary War. It was revived and redesigned in nineteen thirty-two, and it became what we know today as the Purple Heart. It's a solemn tribute to those wounded or killed in service to our nation. It was a beautiful and moving tribute with about a dozen service members, um, present, along with the ladies, um, support auxiliary. And, um, Friday, I had the opportunity to go on a ride along with the APD. It was pretty interesting. We saw a couple of arrests and some other interesting things, and I pray that God really keeps our, our APD officers safe as they're on the streets, um, because they do a tremendous service to our city to keep us safe, and that is my report.
Great, um, Councilmember Lawson? Um, Councilmember Bergen?
No report.
Thanks, everybody, I really appreciate it. See?